It's six, oh, excuse me, 5:06? Yeah, no, it's about right. July 22nd, 2025. And Garrett, let us know when we get about five minutes. It's a six, okay, thank you. So, let's see, so, um, tonight on the agenda for this week, we have discussion on greatest practical extent and non-conforming lot applications and subdivision application. And, uh, and I think, Jim, that was you that brought that up as a topic. Speak up, can't hear you, okay, do that.
It was, it's coming from staff, uh, for two applications. One is application for greatest practical extent non-conforming lot. And the second one will be an updated subdivision application. So, feel free to go through these. These are obviously clearly draft, but these are what staff had thought we would want to see on applications. So, again, we can streamline this process. And hopefully, if we have all this app, all this material on these checklists, that we're hoping that the planning board can then move forward with these in a little bit more routine manner. Again, we have some processes to do with that. Maybe in the future, we can streamline that a little bit. But, you know, like, we have one tonight that I think is coming back with a fourth visit. We're trying to reduce the number of trips. So, if we get this information upfront, it makes everybody's life a lot easier and applications cleaner. I think one of the things I really liked that Christina added to this was photos, because I think, you know, picture's worth a thousand words. So, if we see some photos of property, it really helps us
It does.
On these non-conforming shoreline zoning type of applications. And then, so, again, go through these. If you want to go through it line by line, or if you just want to generally go through it and just say, "Yep, I like that," or "I'd like to also see that." Fine, these are nothing formal yet, but we'd like to get them implemented because we see a lot of these applications coming forward in the future. And the sooner we can get people on board with making sure they have this information, the better it is for all of us.
I think we can go through chunk by chunk.
Yeah, good format.
Okay, yep.
Because also, one other thing I was just gonna bring up, it's kind of sidebar, but one of the things I'm also having, Brett, who's one of my plaintiffs in the office, is going forward on all applications, we're gonna have like a cover sheet. And on that cover sheet, you know, we'll keep updating it as the project moves along.
Oh, excellent, that would be very helpful.
So, we'll have like, it's in for pre-app. It's in for completeness, it's in for public hearing, it's in for final review, final whatever. Just so that, you know, as you're going through your motions, your process, you know what's next with that. And then, then we can kind of see from that as well, are there meetings that we consolidate these for smaller projects? So, again, we can move forward. If we go through those, it takes a long time.
Yeah, that's for sure, yep, you bet.
Especially for you, Mr. Chair. No, not you, Mr. Chair, not you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Do we, uh, do we need to do a pre-application meeting on every, every application? Well, we actually asked for that. I know, but, uh...
I think, again, going forward with these types of things, I'd like to forego them. I think if it's a real site plan or a real subdivision, that's a different beast, it's a bigger contentious. What we've been doing, because none of these, Christina can chime in too, we find that none of these are clean. There's always something that's...
They're all different.
They're all different, and there's always some unique aspect to it that, you know, you just don't know it's coming. And it requires a little thought and a little bit of participation from the board to get some insight as to what you're gonna wanna see to improve it.
Yeah, I can see where, where, where the, uh, major, yeah, the second, third thing on the, or under, under new business, where both of those would probably need a pre-application meeting. But some of these are pretty straightforward, and, uh, and there's already been a completeness determination pretty much made by you.
Correct. And again, I think if we have this checklist, it even helps us even more. Because now we can provide you, you'll have this checklist with your application. So, you can then just say, "Okay, yep, yep, I see that's all there, yep." Really, truly, I will go, I'll let you go through it, but I think if they have all these things checked off, or we can confirm they're needed or not needed, I'd like to see us try to be able to get down to one meeting in some cases.
So, how could we expedite it a little bit? Could we somehow get this information emailed to us? And then, but then, how does the board make a decision on whether or not they wanna have a pre-application meeting before the pre-application meeting?
Well, that's just it, you know, I think that's up, you're gonna have to rely on Christina and I to determine whether it comes for pre-app. I think if we determine that we think it's clean, we'll let it come to you. You still have that purview to say, "We disagree with you too. We think this should become tonight as a pre-app." And we'll have another, more information we can get to the real consensus. But, um, I think, again, if we can get this information that's on the sheet, it's gonna be a lot quicker. Because we get, some of the applications we get now, we only have about a third or half of this information.
Right.
So, again, if we can relay to the applicants, you're better off taking an extra two weeks to fill us in, get all the information, streamline your process than it is to drag it out.
Another month.
Another month to it. But I do think we need to work on in the future with applications is to kind of somehow break them out so that these type of, I don't wanna say consent type things, but somehow we gotta make the process easier for these smaller ones. Because right now, we're treating them the same review tactics we would for a large-scale subdivision or a site plan. Somehow, we gotta consolidate them down for small ones. And I know if we have a sidewalk, that's gonna automatically kick you into another meeting, but when they come back from that sidewalk, maybe we can finalize it.
Okay. For me, it's if there's something that likely neighbors will have some controversy over, that it might be very worthwhile at that point to have.
Right.
Other than that, I think you're fine, okay?
And we know each one of these is unique, you know? If it's a simple tear-down and replace, that's one thing. With the tear-down, expand...
Complicated.
Complicated, right. Septic systems moving, you know, impacts other neighbors, you know, streets, whatever, we all know this, it's kicking in. If you can just kind of look through this, especially under the zoning district and the required documentation piece, the stuff up above is pretty cut and dry. That's just the typical application information, map lot, date approved, permit numbers, their contact information, owner information. When we get into the zoning district and required documentation, I think that's where, where Christina, if I'm right, we'll look for a little feedback.
I'm sorry.
On the zoning district and required documentation pieces, if there's anything they wanna add.
Right.
That's what we're really looking for.
I have a question. Under plans and drawing, are we talking about a hand drawing something or other, or are we talking about a formal thing from our...
I think that that's one of the, the things that, Jim, would like to add to the application.
In the future, what I'd like to add, um, for especially non-conforming lots and greatest, yeah, I guess for both of these, is we gotta have, because she has to make a determination, we need a survey plan. Now, whether that's a formal boundary survey, I don't necessarily care, but we need something that is mapped on the ground with the appropriate property lines that we know, you know, because we have, it's a non-conforming situation. Everything's tight and it's a legal issue. And the same with greatest extent practical. We need to know those setbacks and accuracy of those setbacks. The only way we can do that is if we have some kind of ground measurement plan.
So, do you reference, reference to pins or something?
Yeah, then, so then, do you want about...
Or do you want a formal?
Either perfect world, I would want a formal boundary plan because it gets into the, all the title, everything's done in that case. If you just have a equivalent of a mortgage survey or a land mapping, I'll call it, you still have the issues of other deed restrictions or other things on the property that we don't know.
So, she's... I agree.
I, I, in other towns I've, I have worked in the past, they have kicked the stuff in the shoreline zoning specifically up to require full boundary lines. Just because there's so many legal issues. And then, the consent issues that get issued afterwards because somebody didn't know where the pin was or...
Oh, maybe that's something already...
It tends to be the one location that people move the pins on their own.
So, should that be, should that be...
I think that has, I don't think, we can put it on the checklist and we can request it, but I don't think we can do anything till we formally put it in ordinance.
Well, if you're gonna write up, if you're writing up the form, should it be on there and we don't have to check it off?
Just might ask what, what...
How's it worded, is it just site plan right now?
It says, uh, plans and drawings. Says cert, well, it says certified plan including, uh, structures, septic system, vegetation, contours, replacement of modification of walls, depths, more patios. And then, underneath that, it has plans or drawings. But, to your point, my suggestion was, we just, it's too complicated. A survey, boundary plan is the best thing we have for it. It adds cost, but, I mean, these properties aren't cheap on the front. And we make, if we make mistakes, we get dragged out.
Are there different levels of surveyors' things? The surveyors' survey patients?
I think in some cases, we could use a mortgage survey.
Some cases, we could use a mortgage survey, which is just the documentation of, it doesn't get into all the boundary and deed research, it just has basically just what I said. It's really a land map to make sure the house is on the right property and meets the setback.
I mean, we got one coming up that's basically where you said you're moving a couple of sheds and adding a porch. How far do we have to go?
That, that's a case where probably you're right. A mortgage survey would be applicable. But, if, if we're dealing with the non-conformity issue of a setback, then I think we need, we need a, we need a boundary survey because that's, everything's based on the accuracy of that boundary.
Of establishing how, just exactly how it is performing or not conforming.
Again, I think it's one of those things you can work on the ordinance language for that. But, I mean, we can put in there, to your point, Tina, a survey plan for now.
Okay.
I've got another list.
But I, and we can put it on the checklist, but, and then we can leave it kind of up to the applicant to, you know, we can kind of work with them to see what is the best tool. But, I think in the future, especially in shoreline zoning and non-conforming and all these, it's, I think we need a boundary survey. It's just the only way that we can really confirm. Because if she's gotta go out in field and take, check it, if there's not a boundary survey, how do we know setbacks, you know? Unless we're gonna get a statement after construction by a surveyor that it's conforming, which, and the deed's done at that point. The house is built, now we're going for a pair of units, though, if it's off.
I wish that, I would, on another topic for a moment, on the photos, I would ask for several photos around so we really get an image, get a sense about what it looks like.
What exactly would you like to have verbiage in there?
Sixty.
Uh, let's see. Photo, photos of, uh, let's see.
Would you wanna say, like, say of, of structure?
Of structure, yep.
Of access?
Yep, of access, of if it's shore, something like that, special features, that kind of stuff.
Natural features?
Yep.
Shoreline, something like that?
Yep.
Okay, we can put that in there, I think it'll be something else.
Good.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are you, are there any ordinances here? I'm just curious.
Are we ready for ordinances? No, we're just keep track of ordinances right now in terms of what we might wanna work on in the future.
A lot of these items for, as far as the survey, pictures, so on, so forth, could, when you add your more complicated projects, that's part of the pre-application meeting. You need to bring us to the next meeting, a survey, some pictures, duh, 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 so you have all your ducks kind of lined up for your application meeting.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I think under, just under DP permit by raw, I'm just gonna also put in there Christina and RPA. Is there a bigger DP permit? But it's the same thing.
And the subject design, should it be subject design and date?
What do you want?
Well, I have the date that it...
We can have them at the date, though.
I mean, it's just...
If it's an older date, then it's good to be clear on the application. But, I mean...
David, David, do you want last pumped? Is that?
What about verification of...
It's required on a shoreline zoning.
Well, it has to, it should be, it should be if it's, yep, it's with a shoreline zoning.
I think it's in the shoreline zoning.
That's right.
I mean, if you're asking that, do you want verification of an inspection on some cases, like if they're expanding on the building?
Doesn't, doesn't require an, an inspection, but it does require that it be pumped every five years if it's 10 years or older.
Right, but the expansion is an older system. You might wanna know that that's still working, maybe it should be.
Yeah, but I think if it's expansion, we're gonna get up in HHT 200 too, right?
Sometimes. I mean, if it's, if the bedrooms are, are the right size, we'd try to, you know, sometimes we'll try to use it.
Go ahead.
So, going back, I don't have the documents, so I was listing what Jim was reading. Something, he was reading the introductions and requirement for plans and drawings. Can I hear the word certified?
Uh, it said certi, uh, the checkbox here says certified site plan including. So, I don't know if we should say certified, I agree with you.
Certified is a technical term that if you are, for example, in a rural area, willing to accept a drawing, you're not gonna get a certificate from anybody.
So, I don't think...
So, should it just say site plan?
Just say site plan.
Yep. Good point.
Yeah, because certified gets into aspects of warranty. I'd face that in my own insurance, so... We could say professional, but I don't, you know, go there.
Isn't, isn't the applicant sort of warranting the information's correct?
Yeah, but, I mean, I think you don't want, I don't think we wanna go to the level of certification. What's the...
Well, that's what I mean. I don't, I don't know if you need the certified in there anyway because applicants warranting that this information that they've...
Right, exactly.
Put forward is correct.
Certified has, that's get connotations of warranties and guarantees. We know it's just the best information available at the time.
So, along with the subject design, did you, did you add in last pumped?
I've got subject design, the date, and then I got tank pump maintenance record. Is there anything, um, I think she's covered it, the plan for vegetation, tree removal.
Just trees, yeah, that's fine.
Type of vegetation slash trees to be removed, put that in there, so... It's all kind of, I hate to use the word common sense because we'd be doing this if it were common sense.
And no such thing, I mean...
If there are trees to be removed, we might wanna picture of those. That might be another picture.
Well, you put that under special features?
Sure.
So, that could, I mean, could be...
That would fit under special features, yes.
Overall, you guys did a great job on this thing.
Yeah.
But that was mostly Christina, I think she, I guess.
I figured from the town I last made it was just the same one.
Well, thank you, though.
So, we'll make those, if the board has nothing else, we'll make those like a qualifications additions.
Okay.
Second one is kind of an updated, um, subdivision application because we really don't have, right?
We don't have a subdivision, not that I found, no. Not subdivision application.
So, okay, try to match it up, I think, with the matrix that they use for a lot of them.
Actually, Garrett put all the work into that and he did use the, um, the ordinance, he went through the ordinance as he created that.
You stuck right to the ordinance, Garrett?
Well, most likely. Yeah, we go, you're gonna get us in trouble.
So, this is the one that you may, you know, I don't, I don't know, I don't know. Because one thing that I have a question about, what we may wanna put in there, um, other approvals from state with government agencies. There's a question that I often have working as a consultant. Some towns will grant me, um, approval with condition if I need a DEP. Some towns say, "No, we wanna see the DEP before we grant you local approval." And more and more towns, especially under subdivision, are now requesting that we get state approval, state approvals first and federal approvals first before they get local approval for subdivisions. Site plans, everybody's still saying conditions. But subdivisions, it's a little more strict. I don't know all the rationale behind that, but I know there's a lot more components to a subdivision than there can be to sometimes a site plan. Site plan's usually just stormwatering.
Okay.
But did you have any questions or... And I think it's also good to, as you'll see tonight with some of the pre-apps, try to pinpoint those items that the applicants may wanna waive early if we can. Give you some context of why and rather than waiting to the end, then springing it on them, so, again, more transparently can be upfront to them. I know with pre-app, you're not making a vote, but if there could be some kind of, you know, clear intention from the board of what they have, expectations, again, it helps us move forward through the application. So, I don't, do we need, we don't, we just need their, do we need a vote? Or we just need...
No, it's, you know, input.
So, then, when you get the application, obviously, you'll get it, you'll get this with it. And again, this can be changed or modified at any point, so... Obviously, it's a living breathing.
And you said...
Oh, yeah.
Application documents.
It's never perfect the first time.
We missed something, we can add it in, the next one.
You say the one technical issue may be requirement for survey rather than just a sketch.
Um, not for subdivision.
No, I need for...
For the other one.
Yeah, the other one.
For this one, it's pretty much straightforward.
I guess if we're here, we have it, I assume you're familiar with the stuff they're talking about, this new law.
Oh, the new one that we have to...
LD...
LD 1829.
Yeah.
It was supposed to be discussed...
You can tell us about what that's gonna be, but...
From what I understand, and obviously, you guys have the documentation, right? You got the same things that I've seen today that you have to June 2027 to implement. The biggest change is five or more dwelling units now will constitute subdivision. Three or more lots stays the same. But there's a whole bunch of little fingers in amongst those dwelling conditions that I think, kind of like the ADU, I think some of those things are gonna have to be worked out in time.
Well, the thing I was, I read here, it says, "The legislation establishes low minimum lot sizes." So, I'd like to, I guess we'd need to find out exactly what part of the legislation...
Well, I think if you go, I don't know which one, there's a couple of...
Yeah, look it up.
Yeah, a lot of these were geared towards urban areas and growth zones where they can get the higher density. Obviously, in rural areas, you have septic rules which are gonna define what you can do in those areas. So, um, one thing I would like to maybe find out is, what is the actual maximum gallons per day that you can dispose of on 20,000 square foot?
Okay, that's a good reference, that's for sure.
And I know, we all know that you can put a legal single-family home on that, but what is the actual max gallons per day that the septic code allows? Because it could be different than, I mean, you do a single-family residence, it's a two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom. What's the, so what is the actual flow rate? The max flow rate by the wastewater code, if you could do? But I think that'll help us determine what we wanna feel is the right number for dwelling units.
Where would you find that, Jim, state?
It's probably the state. I think we'd have, we'd wanna talk to the site evaluator or maybe Christina, you can talk to the state to see what that, what that value is. Because, I mean, you could have a, if you had a, you know...
Have you looked through the rules?
Yeah. Sub-shoulders wastewater, it's in the state code, in the plumbing code. But it's not easily computed. So, I think we want that information. And again, it also comes down to the soil types too, so...
Wouldn't it have to do with the, with the soil?
Yes, that's what I mean, yeah. It'd do with the porosity of the soil, yep. So, it has something to do with that. And sometimes, sand goes too fast, right? Then the plume migrates further out, so you kinda want something in the middle. If it's desoils or bad, silty sand stuff, it doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't infiltrate, and it becomes a problem for the owner. So, um, I think it, I think it's based on soil infiltration or even the size of the lot and then the flow rate. I think all that plays into what the max allowable wastewater generation you can put on a lot. From that, I think you can figure out our density.
You think anybody has that kind of data?
State should have, that, I think, is part of the actual plumbing code. It's just, it's typically, they just do it by bedrooms, but there's situations where apartments go in and you need to know for the overall flow rate for the lot.
Well, I guess some of the stuff that we need says "mandating that, limited exceptions, municipalities, while at least four or more units in any lot in a zone residential district is also located in a growth area."
Right.
Or, this is, it requires a public sewer system.
Right.
Okay, so that means that if there was a full-size, say, an acre and a half lot down in that growth district, someone could put in for four units?
Again, I think that's where the septic code comes in. And I've seen it worded in other communities where it's not this public, because you gotta look at the definition of public. Public could mean centralized wastewater system. So, if somebody had a big private system, that could constitute a public system. So, again, the definitions need to be carefully looked at as well.
Same thing with water supply, right?
Same thing with water supply. You can have a transient water supply, it's still a public water supply.
Yep.
And it says...
Those have strict codes as far as separation and distances between each other as well, so...
It says, "Law further requires that three dwelling units be permitted on any lot located in the residential area." In other words, we have, we're all rural, you know, most of the towns are rural residential. Does that mean if you have a three-acre lot in rural Sevago, you could put a three units separate units on it?
Or if you're in the village district, would you put three, on a village, smaller village district lot?
We're only talking about village district, how are we really Sevago? In this?
Well, I think in that case, where it talks about the residential lot, right? I mean, read that again, if you don't mind.
Yeah, read, which one is it?
The law further requires that three dwelling units be permitted on any other lot located in the residential area. And that would seem to imply that, that you could put three units on our three-acre lots in rural Sevago. And so, it defeats the whole purpose of the whole original, original comprehensive plan in that it was designed to create a, you know, not as much population density in the rural area. This could turn the whole thing on, this we were doing 15 years ago on its head.
Yeah, and I think the other thing too would be, do we need to talk to our attorneys or legal representatives? Do we need to start defining, can we get away with defining what we consider growth area designated that, those growth areas only? Or are we obligated?
Well, that might make sense if you had a three-acre lot in a growth area allowing three units. Because we have something akin to that now that allows density bonuses. But I'm worried that this defeats the whole purpose of the original, original plan to allow three units in rural Sevago. Concern there, I guess.
Yeah, I do think that, you know, it's pretty flirty of whomever who's guiding, you know, Drummond Woods and the... We ought to have an evening where at some point, this gets explained, like we did with the ADU, exactly what the legal ramifications are. Again, this does not become law till...
Not that far off.
September, I think. It's ninety days, going as of when it's June, so like the middle of September, this becomes law.
Twenty-four, okay, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah. So it comes to September.
What were you talking about twenty-seven in our last meeting, about?
You have till June twenty twenty-seven to adopt.
Oh, to adopt, okay.
So that's the question, is do you want to take it up to the next zoning session? Or do you want to kick the can down the road? Now, the problem you're going to have is everybody is going to see that this is a state law, and they're going to challenge the town to say, oh, it's state law, let me do it, you know. So do you want to?
Well, I would think if I was, if you were an outfit, so I mean, I think the sooner we can start, I would say we just, I don't know where the town's going to be, whether it's O R C or this planning board, but to me, it should be one of those that's on the zoning ordinance changes coming up for twenty twenty-six.
We've got to have a couple workshops, maybe one with some legal representatives to tell us exactly what all this law and what we can, can't do.
What I'm saying is they're talking about redoing our comprehensive plan, and I would say, how can, and Richard mentioned it at the meeting the other day, is it, you know, things are in such flux, and how can we really plan ahead and come up with anything for the whole?
Well, you know, it used to be that these things took years.
Yeah.
Now they're coming at you every year with something bigger, newer, and they're not thinking about the ramifications all the way through the process, they're just thinking, how do we get the most units?
Units going, I understand they're voting in certain urban suburban areas, it might make sense, but out this far, it just defeats their original purposes of trying to lessen the population density.
Well, if you've dealt with that in the past, you know, then what's the next hair that drops? Now your roads are getting congested, your schools are, you know, everything starts.
The triples are basically, and if, and it's not necessarily going to be the type of housing that people will privately want, I mean, you may rent for the younger, but to, if you're in a little truck, you know, the irony is, there's nothing in there, so anything has to be affordable.
This is, I think this is being created for a future workforce, isn't that what it is?
In the state?
Yeah.
Well, some of it doesn't make.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the theory behind it or something.
Well, if you go down to North Wyndham, and you look, as you come in, they're building a new park, little park complex, and as you turn and go to Lowes, there's a little duplex complex. In certain locations, that does make sense to allow for, you know, more housing. But I'm not sure rural Sevago, it makes any sense, and that's my concern.
I don't want to see that.
Well, again, it goes back to, do we need to have the conversation, or back to Complan, do we need to identify on our zoning map where the growth zones are?
Yeah.
And the growth zone, we already have sort of a population, I mean, a density bonus in that zone. And then we have sort of a neutral, I think it's like two acres or something, this sort of, you know, rural, whatever it is.
Rural residential.
I know rural residential is the greater one.
And there's two other zones.
So the question, does that now abolish that?
That's something.
So should we re?
Should we just take our lot sizes and subject them to this?
Should we rename the village district as the growth zone?
At least we still have a picture of.
Actually, I thought the comprehensive plan labeled it that way.
I thought, yeah, yeah. Designated growth area. Is the rural, is the, yeah, is the village district, right?
No, residential, strictly the village area.
Yep.
That's the one. It's actually great, pretty basic.
I don't know, I don't know.
These are sort of village districts, as I would call them, growth districts, rural residential, but it still has rural.
Right.
Would that mean that rural, we could keep as, as we are, and rural residential might be something?
Well, I guess the question is, if we increase the density so much to some of the village districts, are we compromising?
Septics.
Septic and health issues.
Or should we impact the sources?
Or, you know, or the other law restrictions going to dominate the design features.
My question is, when we say, we'll take it to the lawyer. They don't, I mean, for clarification, they may not understand, like, but we're just, your apologists discussing.
Yep.
So we have to come up with our own decision as to.
I think we have to formulate the questions we have, and then decide if you want to get legal opinions on that, or whether you're comfortable with this. There'll probably be some, I'm sure there'll be some tutorials from the state, or whatever, documents coming out explaining this.
Because that's the question.
Or M M A or something like that.
As you're looking at a map, does it say, what does it refer to as a residential area? We have.
Well, I think.
Village.
Anything that allows residential use, anything that allows a residential use, I think is a residential lot.
Yeah, that's, that's a sort of semantics.
Yeah, that's antics, but I think.
That's a many.
Yeah, it does, which is everywhere.
But don't we have the, the authority as a town to write things, the coding, to protect ourselves for what we want?
I think that's, when I say legal, that expertise, that's what I want to know, how far could we go where we start violating?
That I can understand. I don't want a lawyer dictating to us.
No, but I think we want to know how far, because, you know, typically, in these ordinances, the town has the right to be stricter than the state, where we can't be less. But in these cases, lately, they've been reversed.
I guess, I guess you'd have to, have to ask the question, where are the permits being issued? Are they being issued in the, in the rural residential, the rural district, or in, you know, or in the village district?
Or.
Because wouldn't that, wouldn't that be a, wouldn't that be a designated growth area if you're issuing permits to build houses in certain, in all of these areas, isn't that?
And again, do we need to modify our ordinances to say that the village is the growth zone, clearly?
But, but it says here, it says here that you can't limit residential development in designated growth areas, so if we already have designated growth areas because we're allowing structures to be built in those areas, is that, is that a designated growth area?
What it says, but you can always change growth areas, you can do that independently from this.
You can't limit it, though.
Can't limit, you can change it, I'm saying. But if you say you designate something else as a growth area, then.
There's so much ambiguity. When I first read it, I really just assumed the only area affected was our village area.
Right. If you read into it, it goes, and again, these are written by, and the scary part is, you know, these things are done in the midnight madness.
It does say here with few exceptions, so there are some exceptions, we don't know what they are, I guess, but.
And I think if you all do one of those, it gives you like the minimum lot sizes of five thousand if you have public sewer, public water, and then twenty thousand if you're in a rural area, you always have one or none of those utilities.
So let me, let me talk to Mike, Michael, and I'll see if we can arrange either for a lawyer, or through M M A, or our attorney, to come talk to, to help us with this again.
It's July now, so I mean, if we want to address this into an ordinance, we really would have to really kind of step, getting in this into December, so we've got a few months that we can kind of build this out. And I think, as I said, I think they're going to see some other communities probably doing the same thing we do the A D U, like, what are we allowed to do, what are we not allowed to do? It's kind of a state mandated ordinance, and it's confusing again.
So I don't know, just make a few phone calls and let you know, and I'll let Garrett know, so we can, you know, just get him.
But if the town's looking at Complan, obviously this is something that greatly impacts the Complan.
Yeah, if you put too much into a Complan, you don't quite know what the effects are going to be.
I mean, between this and the A D U, that's a pretty substantial change to some growth areas.
Well, I mean, it basically takes what used to, you know, take nine acres, now it's on three, so whatever.
So that's, the other thing I have to ask is.
If it happens.
So the other question I have is, so they did the A D U two years ago, this kind of like ramps up almost a bit of the A D U, because now you've got a full-blown restriction on the, on the unit.
Did, I'm sorry if you already discussed this. What are the limited exceptions that they talk about?
That's what we were, that's what we want to know. It's not, we're not clear. I, I know some of it is based on whether you have sewered or non-sewered lots, watered or non-watered lots, and then that definition can be kind of, so it doesn't necessarily mean public entity, public utility. You could have a private public sewer, private public water supply, transient water supply, and you still could get possibly those densities that tie them up, as long as you can meet the parameters of utility, septic, water, wells separation.
I would think that M M A would have this flushed out by now for a while.
Yeah, we do hope.
And that the information would be available if we asked for it.
That's kind of like.
Probably going to do some trainings in the next couple of months.
Yeah, I think you're right, David. I think that's the, the entity that we want to lean on is M M A, because I'm sure they're going to get, to your point, the urban areas probably have this already in the mix, it's the rural areas that would be.
Well, it needs to distinguish, maybe based upon population density or whatever, which towns it should apply to, and which it doesn't, and which it makes, may make sense in, and which it completely defeats their original purposes.
Well, I think they look at Southern Maine as, you know, you've got the population, you, you guys figured that out, obviously Northern Maine.
Say you're in a town, and if this is universal, and you're a town anywhere in Maine, somebody can come in and start putting three units on whatever their size is.
Drive three hours to get to work, but yeah.
Well, no, it, well, it kind of also fits in with the B and Bs type of things that are happening.
Paul.
Yes.
So moving forward with this, who's, are we going to contact M M A?
I'm going to contact M M A.
You're going to handle that.
And I'll talk to our attorney a bit about it as well.
Okay.
And see where we can get the best clarity on this, but at least you can move in.
Well, which one is our attorney?
What was his name? Was it, where was it?
Well, we have a town, we have an ordinance one.
So I think that the question would be is, you know, to hit your point, what are the exceptions? How does this impact our Complan? How does this relate to the A D U law that just passed? You know, what does it do to that?
Take whatever suits you best, I guess.
I guess it's a Chinese menu, right?
Pass the town manager and see what he feels appropriate.
I'm going to, I'm going to, yeah, that's my first thought. So once we get something organized, I'll put a note out so that everybody prepares a few questions that I might have, so we make sure we cover that.
Yeah, and I think it's a future, definitely a future workshop.
Yeah, and we have a requirement, the latest thing that came out that had, within a hundred and eighty days, we have to take some state education about that. It's in M M A, of course, it's out there, but it doesn't have any of this stuff in it yet, that I know of.
We've got a training coming up, don't we, Christine?
Yeah, it's with J P Con.
Yeah. They may know some about this, but.
Yeah, and, I mean, they could probably talk about it at that meeting at the time.
Okay.
So the state's implementing this in September, and it doesn't take effect till twenty-seven?
No, the state, it's a law in September. So, but municipalities have till twenty twenty-seven to implement that. It's kind of like the Shoreland zoning, remember when Shoreland zoning changed, it actually changed in twenty sixteen?
Yeah.
Where they gave towns to like twenty seventeen or eighteen to implement it? It was a really kind of a tough transition, because people are reading the state law, but then the town doesn't have it adopted, so, you know, oh, well, you've got to wait for this town to adopt it.
Go back a little bit further, the town, the state was pushing, you know, for a more expansive program, and then it sort of switched back to what you're talking about, you know, the pressure came back from the various business communities, and they sort of backed off on it, which I think.
Might happen here.
So Paul, if this, if this is not part of our ordinance, or we have not implemented it yet, we don't have to entertain these things until twenty twenty-seven, is that?
That's my understanding, but again, that may be a question you might want to ask. What happens if you don't implement it by twenty twenty-seven? Does, do you have to now, you're under the state law, whether you like it or not, or that?
And some of the time we've fallen under the.
And if you can adopt it before, can you make it more restrictive than state or, I don't know, like I said, the states are restrictive, have kind of gone away, now you can't make it.
Yeah, I don't think you can.
Well, the question is, I guess there is, that duplex law has come upon us, and I'm not sure if we've tried to sit there and say that we can't have duplexes in rural Sevago, whether that would fly. It might be at all. Even though it's more restrictive, it may be, we told that that's not what they want from the new program.
So, so basically, an urban area could, could adopt this at any point in time, like Portland, South Portland, where we have sewers and stuff like that, and want to implement this and stop plugging these.
I think you'll find that Portland, South Portland, Saco, those types of areas, they have both water and municipality.
Yeah.
Their ordinances are probably pretty close to this already. The only question would be, is I think the subdivision laws standard up, it changes how things could be reviewed, because now, if you had four dwelling units, now it's not a subdivision, you can put four dwellings in, it's not subdivision.
Right, right.
That's the biggest change.
Didn't they drop the law size now to five thousand square feet or something?
Well, most, some of the towns already have.
Oh, do they?
Some of the cities, I'll say, should be, not towns.
Can you, can you sell one of these units off from a, four units on a one-acre lot? Can you sell a quarter acre for the building?
Yeah. Type of questions.
Yeah, so I mean, is.
So how worried do we have to be?
Well, I guess the question. A condo, a condo at that point, sort of thing, right? If they're selling four, three.
I guess you, I guess you could, I guess you could.
Those are great questions to ask. Or does it have to remain in one entity?
Right.
Because, well, I think if you sell off pieces of land, you've created a lot.
Create taxes.
Not if you have land in condos, though. It's all land, right?
I don't know, is it, is it communal land at that point, or is it?
Is it effectively a condo if it's privately owned?
Well, especially if you develop it as a condo.
Right, and I think that's where it's going to overlap, because I think a lot of these are going to be condo developments.
Yeah. We need to.
Yeah, but A B and Bs, right?
I guess we never addressed it with this guy up in Hogfan Hill, but yeah, is he going to be renting, or is he going to be selling separate units? I don't know, that's something we might have.
I think he intends to keep them and do long-term rentals.
But. Well, that's something we should have thought about, because we started about selling condo units.
To get upfront of that, to Paul's point or to Dave's point, then do we want to start developing a condo requirement? You know, what we want to see with those, you know, is this, you know, condos are in, they're, they're given, they're given a reason to multiplex, you know.
That doesn't apply to this, this L D eighteen twenty-nine.
No, but if, but if that's what's going to form it, is condos, you know, do we want to be able to, be able to regulate those, better buffers or things like that, right?
Better buffers, necessary condo fees to maintain, the upkeep of them? You know, you could start a four-unit condo with a hundred dollar monthly fee, but that's not going to get you a roof in twenty years, you know, or anything, so.
We want to get into rent, rent control.
I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know. I just think that maybe we just want to start with some basic things about, you know, how we cite them, is what I'm thinking.
All these little towns ought to be working together anyway.
Should, and I, I hope that M M A is upfront at you.
Well, I hope the rural politicians are going back and saying, hey, wait a minute, how is this affecting my constituents? Will they do about it? I'm not sure we'd be happy about some of the prospects.
It just seems like the, the whole thing is always geared towards making more housing units available, but if the price is still elevated, how is that combating the problem? It's just putting people deeper into debt, you know?
And it goes back to something you mentioned, that, you know, what we had with our, this plan we have now is to limit the density in the rural areas. You start to change that, and all of a sudden, you get that much more traffic on the road, that much more need for other.
Infrastructure, other infrastructure, whether it be schools or.
Yeah, so you can have a profound.
Then how do you, what is, what's that tax rate for a unit versus a lot?
Well, how can we stay the same in fifty years, like it is today?
That's your Complan.
We should start talking.
I know, but I mean realistically.
We should start having, having, talk about impact fees too at some point.
Well, none of that, but it changes, you know, depending on the growth, I mean, it'll take some time, but I mean, then all of a sudden, you're going to need other services in your community, right? Other things, commercial uses, and things will start coming in, so it has a long-term impact, but I mean, it's going to, if you can control it, it's better than if you leave it uncontrolled, because it's going to happen, no matter what happens. People, the world's growing, people look for places to live.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, it's never going to stay the way it is today.
We're on the fringe of the ability to commute in and out of the greater Portland area, too.
As you've seen Bridgeston expand, as you've seen other communities to the west that grow.
Bridgeston itself.
You're going to be an impact, whether you, whether you grow like they do or not, you're going to be impacted.
Pressure from Bridgeston, Naples, from the south, a little bit, you know, pressure's coming from Hyrum, but Stan Hines itself has started to grow a little bit.
How much longer before this town's going to need some, some police protection?
Paul, it's.
I mean, that's, that's a big one, I'm sure it is.
It sure is. So you're gonna reach out.
Okay, you're gonna reach out, yep. Okay, good back to y'all.
At least give us a plan or a roadmap of where to go.
Yeah, if you want to give us something, if they can give you like some websites, Bob, you could do something, you know, just search on around.
There'll be some homework assignments, I'm sure. Okay, let's, shall we close the workshop at this point?
Why don't we close the workshop? Give yourself a five-minute break?
Yep, you bet. So, let us get started. So, welcome to the July 22, 2025 Planning Board Meeting, the Town of Sebago. Call to order for the meeting, time is 6:01. We'll, we'll take a roll call of the members here in attendance. Paul White, he's here. Tina Van Esse, here. Dave McCarthy.
Here.
David Welch, here, and myself, Bob Deliberty. We'll acknowledge town staff as well, we have Christina and Garrett with us, and Jim Seymour as well, as town planner. Let's see, this is a public proceeding, not a public hearing, and unless the planning board specifically votes to go into executive session, anyone here has the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits and materials that are presented. Please notify the chairperson, me, if you are unable to see or hear. The board works from a published agenda which is available tonight with a sign-up sheet. Okay? So, moving along, any correspondence? Anything different that we haven't received? Okay. So, how about the minutes from July 8th? Could I have a motion to accept...
Well, I think one comment on the minutes.
Yes.
Look at second page, it says, "The board asks for the following materials for next meeting, copy of the property's deed," and I want to make sure it's showing access to that lot, which is not on the road, so that it, not necessarily, it makes some mention of the access to that lot.
Okay.
So other than that, that's the only thing I'd say.
Access rates.
The other, the other change on minutes would be that it's not, nothing is ever about the election of the vice chair.
I think David made a motion.
So, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes with the following changes, the one Paul mentioned, and the addition of the nomination and acceptance of David Welch as vice chair.
Could I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Got it?
That vote was 5:02 for the vice chair.
5:00?
Yeah. Okay, all in favor? All in your hands. Great. Okay, we'll now open up to the public for questions. These questions are not related to an application. Anybody have any questions before we proceed? Okay. All right, so we're gonna proceed on to old business. And we're gonna talk about map 032 lot 019, 711 Anderson Road, application for proposed demolition of existing structure and construction of a new home within the Shoreland Zone. Good, okay. So, has the town planner determined the application is complete at this point?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any new information? Yes.
So, when we talked about this last meeting, I thought it was a collage, didn't go to the buildings and buy a new one.
It's up on Hogfend Hill?
That was Hogfend Hill?
So, Anderson Road is the one down by the shore.
Down by the shore.
I'm just thinking, I...
You're thinking Hogfend Hill?
No, I'm thinking the other one.
The other application, our teen, yes.
Okay.
Is it the one on this channel?
No.
The lady's eyes just got so big, my... Just a slight change of plan, man, that's all. Nope.
Okay. So, Jim, have we, have we made a motion already to accept the application as complete? You've just checked it off as complete, I think we have to do that as a group now?
I think you should.
Okay, all right. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the application as complete?
I'll make a motion that we accept the application as complete.
Okay, seconded, good, seconded, thank you. Any discussion about that? Okay, all in favor? unanimous? Great. So, let's see. If we determine that the application is complete, and we have, shall we move into substantive review? Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Second that, all right. Any discussion?
I thought that wasn't a gentleman, he was the contractor.
You guys will say, okay, all in favor? Okay. All right. So, the next move on this would be to move to our voting matrix.
Well, we have one, we have one item to talk about there, yeah.
I was gonna say the same thing.
The, the permanent draining to daylight, that's within the 25-foot mark of the high water, I don't know, mark, 25 feet of the high water mark. Is that gonna, what is that gonna dump out into anyway? Is that, is that just gonna dump out onto the beach there, or you're gonna put a spreader there, or...
No, it'll be a little crush rock spreader.
Okay.
That part's already been approved for the D group and all that.
It has, okay, we don't, we don't have that on our...
You have the, you have the DEP approval, so...
We don't have the spreader shown on the plan.
It's just a little, it indicates with a crush rock.
Okay.
That's all that is, it's not the big spreader field, they don't...
Yeah, no, that's what I was looking for, I was just, I was, I just wanted to make sure you weren't just dumping it right in.
Oh, yeah, oh, no.
Yeah, yeah, all right, thank you.
So, this, right, this plan that you've got, I think, has been modified, I think. The one that I have is the red lettering.
Yeah.
And they did modify that at the last meeting, they came in, because Mainland updated that with a little bit different drainage feature.
Right.
And the one that you have here is the older plan, so, but it has been modified.
Drainage plan, is that the one you have here?
Yes, that, that was modified, that's the old plan.
Oh, really?
This is what we got at the last...
This is what came in a packet.
Okay.
This came in a packet?
It's been modified since then?
That was modified at the, before the last meeting, that was modified.
So this is the latest updated one that we go by?
No, that's the old one.
Is it a packet?
I believe so.
Do you, do you have that?
Do you have that currently?
I gave it, I gave it to you guys last, last time I was here, I gave it to the gentleman on the other end.
This was the original drainage plan, remember, because we wanted to change it because we didn't want the water...
The big one?
Yeah, yeah.
We delivered it to the, to the enforcement.
Fine, and we reviewed it, the only change was, we didn't want this drainage plant to send all the water into the drip bed, so they came up with a diversion scheme where they put up this small diversion and they sent it around to two different perimeter drains. So this is just the older one, but I mean...
Is that reflected in this, these?
Uh, I think that's old, too.
I have it right here. Yeah, right here, he has it, except for the same things that we gave out over the last couple of years.
Does the date on those are old? Uh, there's no date on, there's no date on that one.
Would you like to bring it up?
Yeah, let's bring that up, so we can see that. Because that's the one we were discussing at last...
This is the one that we had last night.
Yes.
I believe I gave it to Dave.
You did.
You did. This is the updated version of everything that we're doing, so those little drainage ditch, things that we're referring to.
That's the only, and the road length's a little bit different, but the calculations all work.
It goes into these little...
Okay.
Yeah, and then they drain out, and then it runs down.
Okay.
Over to here?
Because that's what...
That's an underground, that's the, under, for the, for the...
Permanent drain.
Permanent drain.
Right, right.
Yep.
But all this, all the phosphor stuff is gonna run up on Condon and get into this stuff.
This is just what's caught.
It's just what's caught from the building, we're just taking care of what the building's gonna stop, and we're just working it out.
Okay.
And then this is gonna run down the driveway and all that.
Yep, this is the only one that's gonna run down through the...
Have they planted some blueberry bushes at the end of the...
Yep, yep.
Now, is this still...
Effectively, how, how much is left in that based the, the, you know, the driveway?
As much as we had originally kind of talked about, they've actually kind of cut it down, so I'd, I'd have to look where, he has calculations on it.
Is it being shortened at all, a little bit?
Yeah, just a little.
Shortened up by like 10 or 20 feet.
Yeah, it's shortened up, the original set is probably down, we shortened the driveway up.
Because you were wrong for it.
Yep.
But is this stuff gonna go into the pavement with the blueberry bushes after it? Or is it just gonna, is the pavement gonna stop and the blueberry bushes...
It's a great question, pavement stops right there, yeah, and then there's a crushed rock pit right there, and then it comes, the riprap down with the belt, down with the bag, and how it develops. You see now, this is what this is indicating right there.
Okay.
It shows you what this is, how this is developed.
Okay.
And then the blueberry bushes will catch whatever spills over the top of that, but it doesn't go down through that, the blueberry bush.
Six-inch riprap.
Yep. There's also one up here, too, we took care of, we talked about the one at the entrance to the driveway.
Yep.
So, we're gonna also kind of elevate that, but this was where we're putting a little bit of a drain on the hillside of that, to capture some of that, that comes down that road.
Yeah, that comes down the road.
Just to help.
Yep, okay.
And arrange on that, that'll go.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Layout?
Yeah, I viewed it last time, but I was comfortable.
Okay, good.
Improvement of what exists presently, huge.
Anything would be in this group, I understand.
So he's comfortable with the voting matrix, right?
Yes. Thank you. So, we're gonna move to the voting matrix. Can we have a motion to move toward the substantive review?
We did, we did that. Make a motion, we go down to our voting matrix.
Yep.
And then have final approval to this project.
Second?
Yeah.
All right, so here's the matrix.
I'm gonna take a moment, too.
We had voted not to hold a public fair.
Correct. Did you see the sidewalk, no public fair?
Correct.
Did you guys vote for the motion, or...
No. We haven't done that. So, what do we have?
Did you make a motion to...
I made a motion to begin voting on this matrix.
You did?
In preparation for...
Financiers.
Financiers, okay.
And Tina, I believe...
I'll second that.
So, you're gonna second that, okay. Um, let's see, all right, all in favor?
Any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, any discussion? Thank you. Okay. Very good. So, shall we vote at this point? All right, thank you. All in favor? Opposed?
Of, of what?
Of, of moving into...
Moving into the financing decision and the voting matrix.
Yeah. Okay. I think we got it all, huh?
Here we go. Now, let me just read down through the voting matrix. Bob, do you want to ask these, or you just want somebody to make a motion to go through those?
I think we'll go down through.
Yeah, you can either do it one by one, or you can do them as a group and then just pull the ones that you do have a question of.
All right.
Either way, I think it works.
All right. Well, let me see, what, what do you guys think? Somebody have...
Go down through them quickly and see if everyone agrees.
Okay, good, all right.
So, do you want to vote on each one, or do we want to just...
Just, we can vote if you want, or just get a consensus, I don't think...
Maybe just easy, get the consensus, and then at the end, do your formal vote, so you don't do, vote 10 or 15 times.
Okay, fair enough, all right. So, number one, buffers screening landscaping natural features. Adequate provision has been made with regard to buffers screening landscaping and the preservation enhancement of significant natural features.
Yeah, to improve the drainage.
Okay. Burden on municipal services. Adequate provision has been made to avoid any undue burden on municipal services.
To know that applicable...
No, no effect on municipal services.
Okay. Congestion unsafe conditions, any traffic increase attributable to the proposed project will not result in unreasonable congestion or unsafe conditions on a road in the vicinity of the proposed development.
There's no change.
No change, yep. Groundwater protection. The proposed site development and use shall not adversely impact either the quality or quantity of groundwater available to a budding properties or public water supply systems. Project involving common onsite water supply or sewage disposal systems with a capacity of 2,000 gallons per day or greater shall demonstrate that the groundwater at the property line will comply following development with the standards for safe drinking waters established by the state of Maine. Now, that's certainly a critical question we looked at.
Yeah.
Folks in agreement?
I think adequate provisions have been taken out.
Very good. Hazards, nuisances. Adequate provisions have been made to avoid any hazard to travel or public ways or any glare or other nuisance to the use of adjoining private or public property.
Yeah, I don't think we found any.
No? Okay. Impact on neighboring properties. Adequate provision has been made to prevent any undue adverse effect on adjacent nearby properties.
Yes.
Certainly a word for that.
Because the only, the only thing that I would ask of that is, is the trees that would be cut down alongside the driveway, is the neighbor has agreed with that?
I have had a discussion with the neighbors, they understand the necessity and they are fine.
Okay, great, that's good, that's good, okay. Off-street parking and loading, adequate provision has been made for off-street parking and loading?
There's no change.
That's really no change, yeah. Open space. Common open space areas shall be contiguous wherever possible.
Not applicable.
Not applicable, you bet. Outdoor display and storage. That's probably not applicable as well. Proper operation of proposed use.
Yep.
Okay.
Good with that?
No change there, really. Public health, safety and welfare. Adequate provision has been made to prevent any significant adverse effect upon the public health, safety or general welfare of the neighborhood or community.
I believe you meant that.
And also scenic area, natural beauty. Adequate provision has been made, including but not limited to modification of proposed design site, timing of construction, limiting the extent or filling for excavation to protect the maximum extent possible. Scenic, and it's all scenic stuff we have here. Actually, I think when it's all done, it's gonna look better than it did, so, that should be improved.
Yep, yep, we do that.
Shoreland vegetation, visual access. Certainly taking care of that. Soils, that the proposed project was built on soil types which are suitable to the nature of the project, and adequate provision has been made to avoid erosion, contamination of groundwaters and surface waters, adverse effects of inadequate drainage.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Taken care of. Special features, I'm not sure that applies here. Traffic...
That's what they tend to do to get around the ledge, so...
Yeah.
None of that necessarily is a problem.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Traffic movement. Adequate provisions is made for tra- Adequate provisions are made for traffic movement of all types.
No change.
Really, there's no change, yeah. Utilities. All utilities included in site plan have been reviewed as to their adequacy and the likes. Assuming that's all set.
Yep.
You're comfortable with that? Mr. Senior.
Okay. And waste disposal. Uh, proposed development shall provide for adequate disposal of hazardous solid waste and hazardous waste. Um, good, solid waste shall be disposed by licensed disposal facility, and hazardous waste will be disposed of. Are there any wastes at all that you're gonna run into here? I don't think so.
Not a commercial.
Yeah, okay. Great. Okay. And the other two we have here is, and all fees are paid at this point?
Yes.
Good.
I make a motion to approve the project.
I'll second it. Very good.
Who's gonna vote on these items?
Oh, yeah, we should do that.
Yep. We're gonna vote on the whole package.
Make a motion that we vote to approve the site plan matrix. And as all parties are in agreement, are void as an agreement, that all categories are permitted.
Second.
There you go. All in favor? Very good.
So I make a motion. I make a motion we accept this project? Or does this do it?
No.
No, it doesn't do it. We gotta do that separately, yep.
Accept this project.
I second it.
Very good. All in favor? All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You're off to running.
Go get 'em.
Sure. If, if we, do we already have this?
We haven't.
I have my packet, it goes probably, you sent it in an email? Okay, so it's probably in the email.
You can have that. You guys can file it, or if you're just gonna throw it away, we'll take it.
No, I think we wanna keep a hard copy.
Yeah, thank you.
I think this backup is so, so put together to present it to us on this project. And there was a, you know, a narrative on each part. It was really.
I'm spreading out. All right. I think we're ready to move on to new business. Uh, we're talking about map oh three five, lot zero zero eight, fifty-five turnaround lane. It's a pre-application meeting for a proposed demolition of a ten by ten wooden shed and the construction of an eleven by ten screen porch in addition to the existing structure.
Hello.
And so this is a pre-application meeting, so I have a few words about that. Um, so this is a pre-application meeting to determine whether the application is a major or minor site plan review, and review escrow, and request escrow, and an application fee be paid by the applicant. Have any fees been paid thus far?
Yes, he's paid the, uh, pre out the application and the escrow.
Okay, thank you. In each instance, it is the burden of the applicant to demonstrate compliance with provisions of all applicable municipal ordinances of state law. Uh, would the presenter, uh, please stand and give us your full name and state your affiliation? Already standing, thank you. Please remain standing while the board is invited to ask any questions or provide comments, concerns or requests to the applicant or applicant's representative. Town staff or fellow board members regarding the item being reviewed.
Well, just for determination?
Yes.
We have determined this is a minor.
This is a minor project. Okay, thank you.
Hey, good evening. Uh, I'm Matthew Hackmeyer. I'm the owner of Legacy Builders. Just a small residential construction company. Um, at fifty-five turnaround lane, what they're proposing to do is remove a woodshed that they have there so we can get the allowable space to build, uh, eleven by ten expansion onto their current and existing porch. I'm gonna be digging just two holes for concrete footers and pillars, um, and then framing that structure in. Um, for the existing screen porch, uh, the roof of that's gonna be coming off. Uh, most of the walls are gonna be coming down, and then it'll kinda all be rebuilt. And then tied back into the roof of the cabin there. The, uh, as far as the twenty percent unvegetated, they do fall within, I think it was eighteen percent, somewhere in there. Um, so they fall within that, and the, um, thirty percent expansion, uh, they also meet that as long as we can remove that ten by ten shed. That's what makes the space for us to add on to the porch. Um, the only thing that we're currently waiting on is to hear back from the surveying company uh, to find out, get a precise distance to the water. We're very, very close to that twenty-five feet.
Mm-hmm.
It's too close for me to determine whether or not the structure's gonna be moving closer to the water or not. Um, so we're waiting to hear back from them on what that exact distance is. Um, our first course of action, if it does end up being a little bit closer to the water, would be to just move the building itself back away from the water, so you'd have two structures that were essentially at different depths. Yeah.
You, you'd have to know that right, right upfront, uh, whether or not it's within twenty-five feet, because within twenty-five feet, you can't do it anyway. Uh, there is no expansion within, within that twenty-five feet of the high water mark. Um, and the other thing is, um, I don't know how you can apply the demolition of a shed that's not attached and not within the footprint of the structure to the thirty percent of it.
Well, that's coverage, that's lot coverage.
We understand that.
Okay.
But he's trying to say, or I understand it, he's trying to say that he's gonna reduce his lot coverage, but expand and trade that in and expand the building.
That thirty percent.
That may or not be, may or may not be eligible for expansion.
Right, the thirty percent expansion would be, would be a thirty percent expansion of the footprint of the existing structure. Not, not, not taking any tool shed that's not connected and sits over there somewhere and applying that to the structure.
So does that thirty percent expansion of that tool shed then not need to be in the calculation?
I don't think it can be in the calculation.
Let's separate.
When Oliver's calculations, when Oliver's calculations, he had it backwards when he was speaking. So he is opening up the twenty percent non-vegetated by getting rid of that shed.
Yeah.
He had the expansion allowance on the thirty percent available.
Oh, so he doesn't mean.
He just mixed it up when he was speaking.
Oh, the shed doesn't have to be included in that. That's, because, because the way it reads is, is.
It's being covered with a lot coverage, but not gonna be expanded.
Right. Right, okay, okay. So he doesn't need to, to include, uh.
It's the lot coverage if he needs to get rid of the shed.
Okay. I don't think that's, that's not the way I read it.
He said it backwards, but.
Okay, all right. That was, okay.
It may be that he wouldn't exceed twenty percent even if the shed remains, so the shed has to go. The head has to go, already. The shed is gone.
Okay.
He, he needs to do that to maintain the twenty percent?
I believe so.
Because if he didn't, it would be irrelevant.
Right.
So what is there now? In that corner of the building?
There's nothing there. Where, where the, what we're proposing to put the.
What?
Yeah.
We're aware that it's irrelevant.
So it's really just swearing that part of the building off.
So you're basically taking the shed down to take the twenty percent? How much of what you gotta put on for board, yep? Okay.
Yeah, take that.
Right.
And then your proposed expansion is allowed by the thirty percent rule if you improve by some sort of certified measurement.
Right.
That you meet the twenty-five foot. And it looks as if here, this is a portion of a larger approved, or a larger plan that may or may not have been recorded somewhere. It'd be nice to have, or at least some reference to where that is.
That what you have there is just a, I believe it's just a zoomed in of the survey. Of the survey itself.
Okay.
Does this not, depending on the survey, would this not, if it was going to conform with this corner getting closer to the pond?
I think that's the question that, that's, that's the confirmation of that. You can't be closer than, to what the existing structure is. That's why he needs to confirm that, that the distance.
He can't do it if it's within the twenty-five feet.
Can't do it if it's in the twenty-five feet.
But he just got through saying you're gonna move it back.
Correct. So if it comes back more twenty-four feet from the water, that structure will be one foot smaller.
Okay, okay. That's a shock.
And that will be twenty-five.
Okay.
So we'll just adjust based off what they, you know, based off what they come back. It's very close.
The one corner now is twenty-five, so he can't be closer than that.
Yep.
But he could be at twenty-five.
But if the, if the existing corner is within the twenty-five feet, you still can't do the.
No, no, exactly. Exactly. He's showing, he's showing it right now that it's twenty-five feet.
Okay.
So he can't be closer than that corner, basically.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, just wanted to make, make, put that up out there.
Yep. And I, we're still waiting on that too. I have to get back to D E P with regards to, they also had a question about twenty-five feet, so.
Cause it kicks him into N R P A, he's inside twenty-five feet versus it's a P B R, he's outside twenty-five feet for soil disturbance. So he wants to be.
What do you want to hear from us? What's answer? What do you want to hear from us?
Does that make sense?
That we're good to go.
Well, I think the question is, do you wanna, do you wanna do a site walk?
Just always get twenty-five feet to their.
I, I would like, I would like to see that, that, that survey, or whatever he's gonna do, to, to determine whether or not this, this structure is within the twenty-five feet for us, before we go any further, because otherwise, it's, it's a non, non-item. Really.
Well, I, I think, no, I think what he's gonna do, if it's in twenty-five feet, he's kicking that, he's changing, he'll change the footprint to accommodate it, is what he's saying.
I'm, I'm saying the existing structure.
The existing structure? Yeah, but either way, he's gonna accommodate the expansion to meet the twenty-five feet regardless.
But we're gonna chop the piece off the building?
No, the existing structure is grandfathered. If he puts the addition on, he can't be at twenty-five feet. He's gotta be twenty-five feet back, is what we're saying.
Expansion of.
So I say that, say, say that existing corner is at twenty-four point five right now.
That's not, that's not what the ordinance reads. Expansion of any portion of a structure within twenty-five feet of the normal high water line of a water body tributary stream or upland edge of a wetland is prohibited, even if the expansion will not increase the non-conformity of the water body tributary stream, blah, 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 setback requirements. So it's, you can't do it.
No disagreement. What he's trying to say is he'll conform his plan to the twenty-five foot requirement.
Yeah.
But he needs some sort of a survey to come back.
I need a reference point.
Right.
To know, you know, what we're gonna settle on, criticize.
Expansion of any portion of a structure within twenty-five feet of the normal high water line, normal tributary stream or upland edge of the wetland is prohibited, even if the expansion will not increase the non-conformity. So if you're, if you're within twenty-five feet, the way I read that is if you're within twenty-five feet of the, of the high water mark, you can't, you can't do any expansion on the building.
David, it's done.
The expansion will be outside of the twenty-five feet. He's going to pull that portion out, because what's there is grandfathered.
Right.
He won't be within the twenty-five.
If he does, he's gotta, to your point, he's gotta determine where his twenty-five foot setback is, and his expansion will be outs, will be outside of that twenty-five foot setback.
He's gonna modify the, the plan of the, the expansion.
But when, I don't read that one. But if you read the, if you read on, it, it says, um.
I think they can read comfortably with that.
On page eight.
It's prohibited, even if the expansion will not increase the non-conformity with the water. So you're moving it back, right? Will not increase the non-conformity.
Right.
But the other structure is still within that twenty-five foot mark, if that's the way the survey comes back. So it says you can't do that.
Right. That's the way I read it.
Yeah.
Well, that, that portion is grandfathered, the expansion part will not increase the non-conformity.
Yeah, they, they, they don't want you expanding on any building that's within the twenty-five foot mark area. I don't care if you're putting it on the back of the building.
But it's grandfathered, David.
I'm reading.
It's grand, the building itself is grandfathered.
Yeah, the building's grandfathered, but the, but new construction isn't.
But the new construction is beyond the twenty-five foot mark.
It, that's not what it says there, Tina. That doesn't, that doesn't say anything about what you're saying in that, in that ordinance.
That's where we disagree, David, with this.
You know, and, 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 no.
Because the ordinance says, this is common sense with what they're trying to do, and we need to try to accommodate the applicant.
I think we would need an opinion on it, because I, I'm not, I'm not, I, I don't, I don't see it that way. When I read this, I, it reads to me like you cannot, um, do any expansion on the building area if it's within the twenty-five foot mark area.
Where is it saying that it?
Right there.
On any expansion at all.
Page, page eight.
Yeah.
Just read that line.
Expansion of any portion of a structure within twenty-five feet of the normal high water mark of the body tributary. Prohibited, even if the expansion will not increase the non-conformity with the water body tributary. Expansion of an accessory structure is located closer to the normal high water mark line of the body of water tributary is prohibited. Expansion of any portion of the structure within twenty-five feet.
Well, I.
That's hard, that's hard to read, actually.
It hasn't been shown that any portion of the existing structure is within twenty-five feet. So that's why we needed some sort of an official measurement establishing the high water mark and the distance.
So.
Yeah, so the twenty-five foot measurement that you guys have is my measurement.
That's what you mean.
So.
Okay.
That's, and this is using a scale off of their, off their survey. So there's plenty of room for error. It could be twenty-eight feet.
Right, so David, if his existing structure is more than twenty-five feet, say twenty-five point one feet, that doesn't.
That's okay.
That's right.
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 So that's why, again, he needs the survey.
That's why he sent the survey.
Right, right. Yeah.
If we cross that bridge, we'll be.
That's why I say he's gotta have that first before we go any further.
I mean, in the same token, um.
That's twelve C one.
I don't see why it would change anything if you do a potential site walk. That is risk, obviously.
Do we need a site walk if he's got a survey?
If he doesn't have a survey, I don't wanna do.
Well, we got four basic things. The fees, we hope are paid. We need a site walk, or a public hearing, or, and what they're saying is, at the minimum, we need a twenty-five foot measurement.
Right.
So we need to decide whether we need anything else, and then whether we need a site walk and a public hearing.
So first, do we, uh, do we wanna have a, uh, site walk?
I don't see the point of a site walk if he has a survey.
I agree.
It's illegal.
Right, yeah, I agree with that.
So you're waiting, you're saying no site walk?
Well, if, if there is the, the official.
Well, if it isn't, if it isn't, then we're doing something different.
When, when, when do you anticipate having this, having a survey done on this?
Last week. So.
There you go.
At the survey, it's all been done. I've already reached out to them to just get me the measurement for the existing, from that corner of the existing porch to the water line. And then I sent him the drawing of what we're proposing to do from that corner to the water line. So I'm just waiting on them to send me those, to, to send me the, the survey back with those measurements.
Okay, so that.
So I'm interested in two to three weeks, and that was last week.
Do we wanna do a tentative site walk on that? Do we wanna do a tentative site walk on that? Maybe, good.
But do you wanna do a site, I guess the question is, is there anything here you wanna see? Play your site walk, not so much on the setback, but is there anything else on the property you wanna see? If it's all about the setback, then the survey's gonna tell you what you need to see. Not, then what do you wanna do a site walk for?
For, for me, it's all about the survey, but I don't know about the rest of the board.
I'm with just the survey. I don't wanna, I don't wanna run it on if it don't matter.
Yeah, but make sure it's two things. To properly establish the high water mark, and then the distance from that mark to the existing building and the proposed structure.
Right.
So that's what we need. Unless there's something else others feel they need. So we're there.
Okay with that.
Phil, yes or no, we need a site walk?
No.
Do you wanna do a motion?
Please make a motion.
Make a motion that we don't need a site walk.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Okay, vote. Agree? Okay, just agree.
And to say whether you need a public hearing or not.
And.
It's a minor project.
I'm just saying, you still could have one if it was a minor project, depending on the circumstances. What I'm saying is, do we want one given this project?
I'll make a motion. Do they have any public hearings, do I require it? Second. Very good. All in favor?
So then basically, at this point, you can't really do anything more till you have the survey.
Right.
So you've accomplished two things. You have no site walk and no public hearing. Other than that, you're kind of, uh, we're waiting on that final documentation to verify the distances.
That should be fairly straightforward.
Yeah.
You've done the calculations on the thirty percent.
I haven't concluded those yet, but I will.
Just looking at.
Looks, looks, looks good, but we'll double check.
Looking, same way, looking at the distance from the pond, if that is what they show is the high water mark, and he's looking fairly good. And I'm not sure, again, who's done the twenty percent thing, whether we really need to include his.
We'll double check on it. We'll double check all those.
Either way, it would work. He's moving it, he's not, you know, he didn't read it, so.
I did, I double checked the numbers, and they, I agreed to fit it in the plan.
We'll do this part of the next application.
Okay.
So what we need is good.
For this, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All on you.
We'll get it to you.
Good luck. Keep your fingers crossed. Here comes Sean.
Now, are you also, is this pre, is this Mr.?
Yeah, this one's, yeah.
Again, there's a, I'll let him describe it, but he wants to do a private road, and there's several things that, you know, he may need waivers for, and kinda wanna get some more feedback on those items and what his plans are, so.
Sean, here we go.
Sorry, I'm gonna go for it.
Sean, you can do it, you can do the sitting down if you wanted to, especially if you have a hard time.
Uh, thank you. The motion is, the motion now, by the way. Sean, again, I have property at map ten lot twenty-two dash D. I don't have a road name. I, I've come to you tonight to talk about the road. And, um, I have, I have bigger photos, if you need. Is that a little photo?
What's a bigger one?
Just, you know, some of us, you know, eyesight's a little wandering. So if you wanna figure.
Sure.
Sure, pass for it.
Sean, this is the same road we walked down.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so, uh, yes, we did walk down it. And since then, our, Christine and I and Jim have been talking about how I'd like to improve my road. It is a hundred years old, it's an old, some sort of path. It's just a, maybe it's a, let me stay in this.
Wanna put it up on reserve?
No, no, if it's strong enough to. Hold on, I get it for you. Thank you. Give this one. Yeah. Resistance. Yeah. All right, sorry, thank you. So as I mentioned, I have been in conversation with Christina and Jim around fixing my road up, or fixing my right of way. To, it's bare ground, it's got some divots and so forth in it, right? And so I'd like to, um, put some stone on it, make a road, um, and have a name to it. I did write a letter, and I gave it to Christine and Mr. Wallace. I pressed it to you, cause I thought I saw it somewhere, and you were the chairperson of the road.
How could you last week?
I just wanted to make it. Congratulations. Sorry, I had fired from the podium. Uh, so, um, in, in my letter, I'm asking this, as Jim mentioned, there were a couple pieces of, of concern with my road, and again, as most of you have walked up and down it. And so, um, in the town's, um, land use program about roads, I have, uh, I felt asked of you folks. And if you had a chance to read my letter, thank you. In the middle of page one, we talked about the right of way, sixty feet wide, and it's for, you're, so, let me step back. And speaking with Christina and Jim, we talked about this is a minor, um, project. The road for minor or major is sixty feet wide for right of way. As you walked up down my road, uh, there's some hundred-year-old stone walls, uh, and there's some other utilities and so forth that would make that difficult for me, um, in that regard.
I guess the first question that comes to mind is, you know, a private deeded right of way. And you want that to be a private road, I'm not sure what the distinction is, other than that you can build a private road on a deeded right of way. And you're saying you want relief from the minimum road standards of our ordinance, but why should that necessarily apply to a private road?
Sure. So when I first came with about, I had my contractor, I've exposed to Christina York, reports of Brown fixing up my road. It came back, and I believe Christina spoke to D P W person about what my.
The board director.
Yeah, about what my road should, what I have to do with my road. And they essentially came back and said I have to bring it to town standards. So if I bring it to town standards, I might as well have it as a road versus a right of way.
I'm not sure you need it.
Sorry, I just want to explain. A year ago, I spoke with, with Nate York of York Earthworks.
Yeah.
He was asking questions about the road, and I really couldn't, um, there was a lot going on in the office at that time, I couldn't really. I reached out to the board works director, who advised him to build to the, to the back lot driveway standard. And that's the standard that he's talking about.
Well, again, but why, I guess what comes to this is, why does he need town planning board approval to report, repair his private road?
I think he's asking to create a private road.
He's asking to create a private road. We, it's a right of way, but we don't know it's a private road, cause we don't know what standard it's built to. And to issue building permits off that, it would have to be built to something of a town standard, to make it consistent, right? Ideally, in every community, when you do a private road, it should be a recorded plan, right?
What about existing, pre-existing private roads before, you know, that exists?
I don't know what the documentation is of what's pre-existing and what's not pre-existing in this town. We've already had, uh, issue on some other roads where we can't find any documentation in some cases, so.
My, my property is about two thousand feet down that road.
Two thousand feet? And that, that's a dead end road?
Uh, it's actually a horseshoe.
It is, it's a.
It comes off Hog Fat Hill, goes down through Mashbrook, and I guess I'm gonna probably find something.
Comes back as a loose trail.
It comes back to Hog Fat Hill Road.
Oh, it does?
Yeah. Comes back as kind of a loose trail.
And again, it's been there for a hundred, whatever many years. Mostly as we spoke to is camp roads, logging roads, farm roads, you know, previously used like that, but, uh, actually, I don't, I don't have that. But essentially, the road comes down this way, and you can see it kinda still goes through here, and the road comes back up, Hog Fat Hill Road, about a hundred, two hundred feet up the road.
Well, is that passable?
Yes, sir.
Now, is it passable to emergency vehicles? That might be a different question.
No, that's a good question. So again, to your point, Mr. Wyatt, around bringing it up to standards, so make sure. So right now, a tractor trailer can go down, down my road without a problem, turn around and do things.
So.
Well, that's, that is my concern, though, is why should we require to get a building permit to build it to town standards when there's no intention of requesting the town to take it as a public road? Now, we've done in the past, told developers that if you want, eventually you have it be a public road, you need to build it to public standards. But I think it's inappropriate to require people seeking a building permit on a pre-existing lot to, to bring roads to town standards when they have a passable private road. And I think that's a concern that, that will.
So my only question with that, I could agree with you, but my only question B is, my understanding under statute is, private roads should be recorded to registry of deeds. And so, whether or not you want to upgrade this road or whatever, I just think there needs to be a recorded plat in the registry of deeds that defines that the town has approved this. Cleans up a lot of issues, and I think one thing we have to be careful about, whether it's a town road or it's a private owned road, is that road still has to be built to some kind of acceptable standard for emergency access. And we don't have any private road standards in this town. If you look at our road standards, it diverges to public standard. That's why I've kind of asked them to do this with the waiver requirements, to say, hey, it's gonna be built to a respectable width for emergency access and design for emergency access. And we can just get this, so, again, cause we have this problem now in this community where we don't know what roads are what, or what they're built to.
So what if somebody puts a road in and does this exact same thing, and we, we approve it? Because it's cheaper? And then they wanna put a subdivision in that road that's already been approved by the town?
And I think that's the great point. And that's where I don't know what this town does, cause I only see this one road standard in this town.
I, I don't see this at this point as any business of the town. This is on private property. We've seen your plans for a subdivision down there, they're all public record. I do not, if you wanna bring it up to a subdivision street standard, great, I, I would approve that, but I see this, this board has no business setting this precedent or modifying these standards for.
And, you know, and we're caring for, maintaining Anderson Road, which doesn't meet any of these standards. Why should we tell a private person that they can't have a functional private road unless they bring it up to town standards? That doesn't seem appropriate. I agree with you.
Yeah, but what standard do we build it to, so we know that?
Passable.
As a designer, what's, as a designer or reviewer, what's passable?
There is, there is one standard that we have in section, section five, page twenty-two. A dead end street or cul-de-sac shall not exceed one thousand two hundred feet in length and shall.
But if you throw in the standards out the window, doesn't that one go with it?
Well, I mean.
Yeah, but that's for a subdivision.
That's why my first question was, how long is this road? Let's, let's figure out whether or not the road, the road's too long as a dead end road in the first place to even do any of this. Because if you can't, if you cannot pass, like, you know, to your point, if you can't pass a vehicle through this.
Well, then do you have to cut the, you know, I mean, he has, to your point, he's got this road that goes big horseshoe back to Hog Fat Hill. Does the section that he has to build up to a private road standard have to be, to your point, whatever, a thousand?
Well, that, that applies to when you wanna do a subdivision. In other words, when you wanna do a subdivision, that, the distances and et cetera may apply.
So let me ask this question. So if somebody does that, and I'm just throwing it out there, we'd have roads in town. Every five years, we get, somebody chops a lot off. What point do you say, okay, now we've got a substandard road that serves twenty lots? Where if we had at least some private road standards, we've at least got that built in a right of way? Cause many of these private roads and right of ways have no definition, have no widths. There's no standards for them, but yet we allow people to just keep developing those under that pretext?
We maintain them. We do winter maintenance on them. So not only do we allow some people to do that, we allow winter maintenance to others. So to me, it seems somewhat.
So we just let it go, or do we try?
No, but it, it's, 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 it seems to me it's a practicality standard. Does the road meet the ability of the, the finite power and everything else to get down in there and turn it around? And it meets that standard, or it doesn't?
I'm gonna answer your question.
I, I have two points on that. Um, so, um, my lot is not square, right? It's kinda like home plate a little bit. And, um, and I have a back portion that I have a, another right of way, too, that I like to, you know, that's why I came up with this road. It's, I like to.
The red.
Use it. Yeah. So, so that's here. And it goes at this end, this red circular dock, that's a sixty-five foot turnaround. So that would be for any emergency vehicle, the pumper truck, a, a tractor trailer can get in there and turn it around, right? There's another one right here, that's, these red docks are turnarounds. You can turn around there, and over here, there's another big three-way section that, again, emergency vehicles can do that, to your point. I do have those, I had a tractor trailer down there, and it came back, you know, no troubles. This red way is, is red, you know, if you remember, at the big hill. Up, as upon that hill, that camper goes off to the back portion of my property. It's like two hundred feet maybe along my right of way from the main road. That right of way goes down, back.
So my question to the board is, if we do not want him to, we don't feel we're required to have him bring this up to a standard, but we want to bring it up to a passable standard, who approves that passable standard, or to what?
Jim, in his letter, he.
He asked what he wanted.
He's already recommending from the main department environmental gravel road standards. He's willing to use that.
You guys are saying.
But I'm saying we can accept, you're saying what standard?
Right.
This is the standard that he's proposing.
Right.
Which does the, I believe, this, these numbers over here, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm.
So the net's it?
That is, on that case, he's offering that, but in the future, we don't, if somebody's not offering that, what do we use?
We don't have, I'm not gonna worry about that. I'm worried about him.
Well, it seems to me it's a good standard. We're talking about privately owned gravel road. So why should we allow privately owned?
We don't have anything like that. Well, every subdivision is, at least that we've done in the past.
Sixty-foot right of way.
Since I've been here, is a privately owned gravel road. So those are the standards we've been, we've been using, the standards in our book.
And Chris went up on the hill there. He, we talked to him about it. We said, do you want us, you know, do you want while you're here and now to make it town standards? And I think he declined and wanted private, a lesser standard to keep it a private road.
There's gotta be some minimal, but that's what a standard, there's gotta be some minimal standard that's gotta be, not a public road, but acceptable for public access and public equipment, public emergency services if you cross over. If we don't establish that, I'm just throwing a dart blindly at the board.
Well, do we have a copy of this camp road maintenance?
I don't know.
Manual?
We probably don't.
If it's, if it's a camp thing, they, I mean, like you can't mic a, a, a wacko. The vehicles, the emergency vehicles have to have access.
So is this for the public peasement you're talking about, Paul?
No, what are you, what are you referring to?
Your, your camper.
That's what he's.
Were they talking about, you were referencing it to a standard?
I am, I am state certified for gravel, rural gravel road development. Right? So that's why I know what the standards are, I can build to those standards. And you don't, as a town, as Jim alluded to when I meeting a couple weeks back, you don't have a standard. So I'm offering this type of process for you folks? And maybe you can use it for other people? You know, it's your choice. You're saying, at least you have something to work with, where...
It sounds to me a more reasonable standard than, than on for gravel roads and then to require them to be brought up to...
So what he's asking for is, for his right-of-way, which is not, my understanding is not defined right now, correct?
Yeah, I have a 30-foot right-of-way. So when I first came to, I have a 30-foot right-of-way, we thought that was the standard. And now you folks have, either for a major or minor, 60 feet wide.
That's a state rule, I believe, isn't it?
No, 50 to 60 is more.
So I'm asking...
Is it 50 or is it 60?
50 is, every town can define what it wants. The state, for a state road, it could be different. But for town roads, typically, it's 50. I've seen 50 and I've seen 60. 50 is usually the minimum. Towns do allow, some towns allow 40. With a caveat, never, ever, ever try to get that to be a public road.
That's what we have now. If you want the town to take a development road, you have to bring it to town standards.
But what you get into, David, more or less, is with CMP or other utility companies, typically, they want 30 to 40 minimum, for easement. Because they got to run their lives down there.
40?
Sean, I thought they all, I thought they all had to be 60.
But I guess the question...
I think you're right for it, I just thought that.
I'd like to ask Sean a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said something about you have a background in...
I am state-certified to build gravel, rural gravel roads.
Okay. So, you know, the guy's got some smarts here, and got some background to be doing roads.
As I am shoreline erosion control and certified as well, so I...
So you're not trying to slip, Sean, the, you know...
I'm just offering you an opportunity to use some of that.
Well, that's what it sounded like, you were offering us something to go...
Yes.
To lean back on.
Specifically, though, why does this applicant need to come in from here?
For the board anyways, what am I?
What is the specific need? Are we the persons who accept private roads? Or can you create a private road by having it surveyed and then recorded at the register?
Well, that's the question, that I do not see anywhere in our ordinance. But I, you're the only town I've ever seen that, that you do not have anything in there for private road.
Roads.
And the reason is, is because Dave's point is, once that's a private road, then they can build, pull building permits off that. So if you're going to allow building permits off a private road, I would think the town would want that road built to some kind of basic level standard.
I don't, but I think it would be a selectmen issue.
Now, the, so, other towns you refer to, do they have lesser standards for gravel roads?
Yes, they do.
Well, maybe that would be the appropriate.
Well, that's what I've suggested for a year now.
I accept your suggestion.
Well, again, we can't do that, Jim, I mean...
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that you can do...
You can under site plan review, that's what I'm saying. Private roads fall under site plan review for, for all...
That's the reason we can come in from.
Right.
Well, in our, in our definition, in our ordinance definition, private road, a private road is a thoroughfare or way designated for private use and maintained by a property owner or a group of property owners. So, and, and right above that, it gives the definition for a road, which is a thoroughfare or way consisting of a bed of exposed mineral soil, gravel, asphalt, or other surface materials constructed for or created by repeated passage of motorized vehicles. So, basically, what he has is a road. And to make it a private road, you just, it, turn it into a private road. Turn it into it.
Recorded at the registry of deeds and it becomes a private road.
That's it.
Survey it and record it.
Excuse me, where was that, did you read from? That's, that's under definitions in our ordinance. It's on page, it's, section nine, page nine.
So Dave, Dave, so I can be clear about this, because we get this all the time. Is, you're saying that anybody can go out, create their own right-of-way, record it, they have a private road, and we can issue building permits off that?
This is a...
That's, that's, that's all I'm saying.
That's what you're saying?
I'm saying, I'm saying that this is an existing road, much like other existing roads in the town.
What's an existing road? Is a hall road an existing road?
Well, we have, we have criteria for building streets, and so we don't, we don't define them as roads. We define them as streets for whatever reason. Or I guess we intermingle road with street.
We do intermingle.
But, but there is, there is a definition for roads and private roads in here, and they both, and they both point to the same type of road, which is, which is just a beat-down pass, basically, that travel vehicles all up.
Well, let's, we'll get to some of the specific question this guy has asked. If our, if our, Mr. Seymour suggested we, we can't address the issue properly, then I'd address specifically what he's saying. Which is that we don't want, I, I think, at least I don't think he should be held to the standards of what we require to have for a public road. And if he can substantiate the standards he's talking about with a provision of the Camp Road Maintenance Manual, is it have, and, uh, the main department of environmental gravel road standards? And if he can show that he could meet the main department of environmental gravel road standards, then we should allow him to do that.
So, one caveat, so, I have a question back to you on the definitions. So if that's the case, lot frontage, lot width measured at a street lot line, does that mean you can't issue building permits off private roads? Because they don't have lot frontage?
Wait, do you think the ordinance... Do you think the ordinance needs some work?
You know, guys, is this the place to be discussing this, while this man is waiting for an answer?
Whether this is what, it should be changed in the future, this, that is a specific question.
Because it's so void, we don't know how to regulate it. That's why, that's why I'm coming to do a pre-application, because we have no idea how this gets regulated going forward. He's trying to plan for his future, we're trying to give him the best advice.
The other towns you work with, what generally do they require for width?
For a private road, it could be 20 to 16 feet.
So in other words, he's proposing a road that's at least twice that?
No.
No.
40.
Width? 40, yeah.
No, no, the road width, you're talking the actual street width or the physical travel width. The width is typically 50.
What were you proposing, Sean?
So, uh...
16?
40. 40 and 16.
Right away is 40 feet instead of 60. So I have to go back to the, my butters and ask for a change in my road right-of-way.
This is a key point to me. It's mentioned, the road in a, the road in accordance with the main department of environmental gravel road standards. I'd like to see a copy of that.
I have a 2010, I have a 2010...
So the standards that the state has said this is a gravel road standard, correct?
They have, they have portraits and so, I didn't bring that with me. There is one. I have two of them, that's the one.
I'd like to hear from Christina, she's been trying to say something for the last 20 minutes.
I just, I don't know, you're saying that it's not something that you guys review, but this is a planning board review.
Right, I mean, that's what it asks you, have to ask to know.
Is your table contacted?
Yeah, I couldn't find the checklist that they're talking about.
Road surface problems.
So I'll try to get more, I'll go over this next week and standard, I'll get more copies of the book for you guys.
And that's an official document provided by the state of May?
Yeah, the Department of Environmental...
Then all we'd be doing, instead of creating our own standards or winging it, is saying, let's apply these standards that have been developed to this man's case.
Haven't, uh, isn't it normal practice to, if the state has a plan and we don't, that we just follow the state's?
I think we should follow the state's.
Not unless you have it in your ordinance to say so.
Really? Okay.
We think it'd be common sense to follow a standard that's been adopted.
The thing is, I don't see any, and I'll, we'll go through it, but I don't see any, I see recommendations for depths and materials, but I don't see anything for width, so, um...
The man designs roads, let's remember that.
Well, give them a second to see if there is anything defined.
Well, there is, there is an updated version of it.
Yeah.
This is an older version, so I don't think you'd want to see the, the...
But it's online, you can download it, it's a PDF.
The sensible thing might be, get a copy of the, upload it. You need to provide it, we don't get it for you, you provide it to us. That's how things work.
But there actually is a link in that.
And, and be sensible for the town to say, the state has developed these standards for gravel roads. And that, in the absence of our having our own standards, the appropriate thing would be to follow these standards. I don't think it's appropriate to require full-blown street requirements on private roads. It, it's best, you know, that just seems overkill.
So this document that I see here, it doesn't directly, but in the, some of the details, it refers to a 12-foot wide road with...
Talking about 40, someone...
No, no, we're talking about the right-of-way is... The travel width.
Travel length would be 16.
But I think, I think to be, if we're going to do this, you know, the concern is public safety, so my question would be, this is great, this is Christina's, if you guys need it. I think the other question would be, is 12 feet acceptable to public safety? That's all. With wider fire trucks and things like that.
You're saying 16, right?
I'm just, because I was told that I had to bring it up to town standards,
and, and either a small or a major project was 60 feet wide right-of-way. And a 20, and depending on a couple things, it was either 15, sorry, 15 feet wide travel length.
The town standards in his letter are 60 for the right-of-way, 20 for the travel way, 4 for the shoulders. And obviously, we're not going to require sidewalks. He offered 40 feet wide right-of-way, 16-foot travel way with two-foot shoulders.
Which is, well, he said 20 to 16, so we could say travel, we'll ask for the 20.
I think if you get the, well...
But he said you can't...
He's going, you know, he wants a 20, he wants to knock it down to 16. Okay. With two-foot shoulders. So I mean, you end up, even with the shoulders, you're ending up with a 20-foot wide surface that you probably can get something in it. I find this acceptable, very acceptable, what he wants to do. I guess just going forward, I just need to know, Christina, I need to know, how do we want to bring these to the planning board? That's what we happen to be here for pre-op. What do you want to see, what do we require to see? Because we're in la-la land, void land of how we handle these. And we just don't want to set something up that we're approving these things, and then 20, 10 meters down the road, we find out, boy, we should have done it differently.
Well, I think this is your key. We should make reference in our ordinance to gravel road maintenance manual, making clear that for private gravel roads, this state standard was, should apply to our town. And then, as to other issues, when you want to bring it up and turn it into a public road, you have to bring it up to public road standards. So that would be the approach. In the absence of our own standards, rather than wing it, this is a very good place to say, well, we don't have anything in our ordinance, and therefore, let's go to the state manual and follow that.
Until such time as...
Until such time as is adopted by the town, that we should follow the state manual for private roads. I don't know how that works, but that's what we should do.
If they proved it that way, would I be able to approve? The next, like, if you want to put a house down there? Probably use that?
In the same way up here, the thing to do might be, while he's down there working on it, is, you know, put a, a place where it's wide enough, slight sign of vision, pass, passing ability. And then at the far end, put a good hammerhead turnaround, you can turn and they can strike.
What they do in Bridston, for instance, what they do in Bridston for that is, they offer a couple different ways. Either you got to put, um, not Bridston, Raymond, sorry. And Raymond, they, they have the same limitation. If you put a hammerhead at that distance, then you can go another, put another hammerhead in. Or you can put a bypass in so that somebody can, in one area, a truck can pull over to the side of the road, so you don't come up with emergency vehicles.
And that's what you've basically done on your plan here, Sean? Is that, where you've got, you've got these cul-de-sacs that you've already... These are already in place. This one is, so, this road though here is, is 14 feet wide, and I have a little bit of water on one side of it. That's, that's something, I want to talk to you about that, in terms of, it's 14 feet wide already. It's passable, a truck, you know, a big truck can come down, there's the hammerhead, go to turn around, however you want to phrase it. That's one. This is right here in an open field, which you folks walk by. And this is where you went to the water.
So who's going to have access to this private road?
So I have two butters. They have, I, I, so I don't, I only own this part of the road. Uh, one, my butter owns this, and another butter owns that. And then, another butter owns this part of the road, it keeps going that way.
And if we are approving a private road, we could make some conditions on the number of, ultimately, the number of lots that could be serviced by the road.
That, that's already... In the future, you could, right now, you have nothing. But I think the more important thing would be, what is the, we'd want to see how, who is maintaining the road.
What's a private road, it should be privately maintained.
You already have one, as of with roads, and how many houses can go on there and stuff, already. It's in your, I think, of a page, it's, it's already there.
That's all, the subdivision, right?
Um, the width of the road determines the lots. There is, so, uh, it's, it's 15 feet for up to 10 houses, it's 20 feet for up to 30 houses or something like that. It's in one of your pages, you brought it to me when I was here at last. There's a table for that somewhere.
Yeah, there's a, well, that's the length of, I think it's the length of, the number, you have to have a, you have to have a loop road if you go over a certain number of lots.
I thought it was the width one.
But you, you have your lots there, but that's for family.
I, I do, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, that's what you're planning, this is a family compound, so to speak.
Do you know how many feet it is down to that first cul-de-sac from?
This one?
That hill?
Yeah. Here? Um, it is 1250, isn't it?
1250?
1250. No, it's, yeah. Because here is 2,000 feet. And that's kind of go like this. Off the street.
So Christina had a question, which is, if he builds this to the D P road gravel, camp road standard, can she issue building permits off that road?
Yes.
I don't think people should be required to go to a colossal expense to bring it up to town standards when they have no intention to make it a town road, and if it's passable and for public safety vehicles, then, yes?
Yeah, there are certain, to your point, uh, down in here, up on this turn here, there, there are ways people can kind of pull over and get out of the way. Another thing was ditching, there's ditching already on that road. I had the state soil hydrologist personnel there looking at my road before my survey went out, and he was showing different ways to have runoff and so forth. That's in, um, unscarred barrier spaces and so forth, so it's not creating any erosion or doesn't contain any, any issues like that, so. So before I go up to them, have them come back to do the work, you know, to mark out everything, I, I just need you folks to guide me.
That's what seemed to me, that, that, that a good standard for the town to follow for our private gravel roads. It lays it out what's necessary to have a road that, that will last and not cause environmental problems. And if that standard is met, I think it would be passable. It's all, also, everything is, is individual. In other words, you need to perhaps sit down with the public works director and the fire chief and, and say, let's go up the road and walk. You know, maybe here's a spot, if we come up the hill, make it a little wider, she can pass two vehicles. As it press the hill and go down, find another spot. We get to the far end, make sure you can turn any kind of vehicle around.
And, and there are already, yes. Go ahead.
Yeah. Can we do a temporary standard? Can we adopt it as a temporary?
I don't think you can, you can, I think you can coordinate with the fire department, the public works department, come up with an acceptable standard that works for them now. My advice would be to create something that's in your ordinance long-term.
Yeah.
My other question would be, is, is the board approving this? How are we documenting these private roads? To me, they should be recorded.
Absolutely, yes.
So, are we just basically saying, okay, the board's going to approve this, then go record it? Do you want to sign that plan? What process do you want to get these recorded?
One of the things I have a question for the board. If, if we accept this, and, I'm coming around on it, I think it's probably a good idea. But should that road in the deed be recorded as forever private? but should that road in the deed be recorded as forever private?
There could be a note, there is a standard note that I have in other communities that I can share with the board, that basically says, this board, this has been approved for private use, it shall remain private use unless it's brought up to town public standards and brought to the board for approval.
That's how I just think.
Is there gonna be a limit set on the number of dwellings?
As we discussed earlier, and you said you don't think we could do.
I don't know if we have anything in place.
And what about commercial?
You need to come in for a commercial?
Well, if he does a number of dwellings at one time, that would be a subdivision, right?
Right.
And would that road not come under subdivision scrutiny then, at that point?
Yeah, that's a condition of approval.
If he breaks, like, this is not just half, this is any situation, or people may be breaking off a lot in five years. And what number do they have to, are you gonna set a number, or they have to come down?
Well, I don't think they can now, 'cause I do think that's something that would have to be posted in the ordinance, to be fairly clear.
As a, as a condition of approval, you could.
What about roads that have been created?
So if you create a subdivision, you have to bring it up to road standards to that, to, to that subdivision. First subdivision brings it up to road standards, somebody doesn't have a subdivision, they gotta bring that up to road standards, as you go down that private road.
And remember, there's been private developments that didn't need to come before the planning board at all, where they created roads, with surveyors and had them recorded, and that creates a road, so.
Yeah, I guess the question, if they're not recorded, though, we're kinda helpless.
Think again why you wanna build this route?
Again, it all started with, I was trying to put, do maintenance on my road, and put gravel and so forth to make, 'cause there's some rots in there, as some of you folks have tripped over. I just, that's how it started. And this is where it's gone.
He also discussed that in that back lot, he was looking to possibly build future residences down there as well.
So you have your butters and the owners of this right of way, you have their buy-in, and we would need documentation of that?
Fair enough, fair enough. The answer was, you wanna fix my road for free? Sure, go right ahead.
Exactly.
So, yeah.
So what we would, would need is some sort of a survey that shows the road.
Yes, that's true.
Shows, you know, but turnouts are necessary. Before you finalize it, you might as well get input from the Public Works and the Fire Chiefs, so that you're all on the same page. And I guess if you brought in a surveyed road that showed all this stuff, that would allow the board to act on it. Is there anyone else who feels?
So, my, my question really today was, to do that, which is, which is fine, but I do at any rate, is there a way that we look at the right of way, the street width, you need for sidewalks, all these other things that you guys still have on?
Yeah, I think that, the way I understand the board now, the board's basically saying, you define your widths, right-of-way widths, your road widths, and confirm with the Fire Department and the Public Works Director that that's acceptable, and the board will then have to look at that, say that minimally meets the D, I think what I heard from Paul is if it meets the minimum D P standards, then I think they'll be fine with it, and then you'll have to record it. But, there'll be a note on there saying that if you exceed, or if this comes up to a subdivision standard, or you want this to become a town road, you'll be required to build it up to the town road at that point.
Yeah, but you already have a survey of this property.
It's not necessarily a survey and proposed forty-foot width.
So that, right now, what you have is a thirty-foot right of way.
Yeah.
That I have, so my, my question is, that sixty-foot right of way, even now or then, I think would do more damage to.
No, I don't think we're hung up on the sixty feet. Only the sixty feet comes into play is if you ever trip this into subdivision, or you want it to be town.
Right, but even for a subdivision, sixty feet wide, that, that just is erroneous.
Then you'll have to roll the dice at that point, and see if the board wants to waive it at that point.
Only because you want, before, when I was here, we talked about the tranquility and the scenic value, and the town value in that regard.
That'd be a waiver request at the point when you do a subdivision.
Yeah, no, you can't do.
Is it not, is it not the utilities that require a sixty-foot right of way? They don't either?
No, minimum is typically thirty to forty for utilities, you know, for C N P.
I know your utilities are private.
My, my utilities are private, they're installed, and I have a thirty-foot right of way.
Okay.
Merle, did you have something? You were.
Please, for Sean, is any portion of the road within two hundred and fifty feet of the wall?
Uh, there is one section, and, the other piece of this I wanted to bring, that's right here.
The other piece would be the stormwater component outside. So it'd be probably your biggest concern, is how is the stormwater being handled from this?
The chance to me that this lays out a lot of standards on how to do that.
Right, but if he trips a certain impervious surface, he trips stormwater law.
Right, and then again, there's ditching already down there. As I mentioned, I had the gentleman out to, to address those issues for me, and he's already provided a plan.
So that standard is twenty thousand square feet of new impervious, so like, that red road might be considered all new?
So we wouldn't consider, why wouldn't we consider a green road?
Well, a green road, if any portion of that existed prior to two thousand and five, basically grandfathered under stormwater law.
That's for a hundred years, et cetera.
So you have to take whatever, add that up, but, yeah. It's not easy, it's not fun, it's complicated, but I just wanted, board to give him some guidance, and probably Christina and I some guidance, please, we're in a, not even a graze zone, we're in a fog bank.
Well, I'm part of the fog, yeah.
The fog cutter always for the town to sit there and say, look, there's a good set of standards for gravel roads that made up. Let's go straight forward, adopt those standards for our gravel roads, and, and go from there. The other side of it would be, we don't, when he does come back, or try to subdivide, how big is your, is parcel three here? How many of us?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Twenty-two, okay, needs to be subdivided. Well, that's the question. If we were able to, would we approve it to limit the number? We're probably making sensible thing, and being unable to. Like I said.
I mean, I, I don't know, you could talk to a attorney, you may, I mean, he's only coming in for the private road, but I don't know what's, I don't know if we can limit that or not, I don't know what statute we lean on to limit the amount of development he's doing on that road.
How many kids you got, Sean?
Well, ideally, there might be a standard set for this number of units you need in this standard, units less than that, you know what I mean?
Well, the interesting thing here, so this is what, under that subdivision review, just going back to again, it's section, page eight, 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 nine. Maximum length of road, dead-end streets, defines major or minor, shall not exceed fifteen hundred feet or length, or the length required to serve up to twenty-five dwellings, whichever comes first. The planning board may waive the maximum length, if stipulated it finds that twin dwell, ten dwellings or less will be served by the street. The road is maximum length of two thousand feet, and the applicant demonstrate the overall environmental impact by the development of it, reduced by the longer street. I mean, it's just so ambiguous language in here.
Again, that refers to.
Well, that's not ambiguous.
It refers, it says street, not road.
With me app.
Exactly, right. And that's where the language thing, it happens in every community. You've got road, you've got ways, you've got lanes, you've got streets, and they're all different definitions, but everybody uses them interchangeably.
And you can't give a waiver that is contrary to the purposes of this ordinance?
Well, he's not, I'm not sure he's, he's asking for a waiver, because.
He's not asking for a waiver, he's asking for a standard.
He asked for a waiver in his letter.
In the absence. All the advice of us.
He told me to use a waiver.
Because I didn't know, I didn't know how else to approach this.
Yeah, in the absence, though, of his, any desire of him to make it into a public road, or to do a subdivision, then it's appropriate to apply standards for the gravel road. So I would say that the, that the town, I mean, the planning board should recommend to the town that we adopt those standards for the gravel roads.
I think, when you say adopt, I, I think you mean the O R C, or whoever's gonna be writing ordinances, to use this as a guide.
No, just adopt it as our.
Well, no, but I think the problem is, I think some of the fire departments are gonna have a heartburn with twelve feet wide.
Yeah, well, he's not proposing it, he's the.
No.
But I'm just saying, going forward, I think you want minimal sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen is typically the standard.
Use this as a guide, we don't have to copy it verbatim.
Get the latest version of, what's that, two thousand and ten?
So if we could, just so I give.
Nineteen and ten.
Mr. B had some guidance, is the board, in a general, I know you're not voting on it, but you agree with Paul that standard that he's suggesting is adequate if he gets a sign off from the Fire Department and the Public Works?
Yes.
For what?
For private road right now.
With, with a condition?
Yeah, with a few conditions.
Condition of approval having to do with subdivisions, so, you know.
Well, he's not asking for subdivisions, he's just asking for a road.
I know, I know, I know.
But I guess that's the question, is that, you know, if he triggers subdivision, he's gonna have to bring it up.
Right, yeah.
Or if he wants it publicly accepted.
So let's go back to what the question is. Are we satisfied with Sean's proposal to build the road to the specifications that he shared with us at this time? Pending the Fire Department, Fire Chiefs?
I think the only other piece that I have is an engineer concern would be, I think we'd wanna look at the stormwater.
Right.
So we want some sort of.
Does it increase his.
Survey showing the road again, things like that.
Survey showing the road addressing the stormwater.
Yeah, exactly.
And your engineer or whoever you've got pinned down there said it was gonna be okay?
Survey. I'd just like to know about the, the right of way, because I have to go back to my butters and ask them.
I think for now, the board is, I'll speak for the board, I think the board is satisfied with your forty-foot request.
Okay.
But understand that in the future, if you wanna subdivide that, you trip subdivision, it's subject to planning board review at that time.
Yeah.
Right, okay. So I have to have my survey to come back at any rate, so if I, I can tell and talk to my butters.
If you want a plan that shows where that forty-foot right of way is, and that'll be the plan that you wanna record.
Right, right. So, okay, and then you have an application for road naming or something. Is that road, just road naming, not road acceptance, not road?
Is this a continuance of Hogfett Hill Road?
No, sir.
No.
Then you'll need a private road.
Yeah.
Okay, let me ask you this. It's a, as I said, it's a horseshoe road? Is it two roads or one road? Because I don't, I think that what's gonna happen is, for the piece that you have accepted as a private road, the rest of it will be a right of way, but it won't be an accepted private road. It'll only be to where you designed it. Okay, I'm just thinking about my neighbor, my butter, on that side of that, what am I, I just wanted something to tell you.
Yeah.
Tell you one, one name, or, it stops at the, at my end, and where his begins?
I would try to get together with your neighbors, just come up with one name, so you have this to be the road, and then if something happens in the future, you can call it extension.
Okay, what about my red road?
That would be a separate road name as well. Or way, or lane, way, or whatever.
For that portion, again, I'm just asking because I know it's fourteen feet wide now, and I've got a little, a wetland on one side and some other bits, how do I approach?
Well, I think, we talked with Christina, you were gonna bring that up to a backlot driveway standard, right?
I tried, well, I tried to explain to his contractor that's what it needs to be brought to, and he was arguing, and I don't know that it was brought to that standard.
That's not my road.
Well, if he does that, then that's, it'd have to be brought, that one would have to be brought up, I think, to, for what we understand would be a backlot driveway for that one, but that's got standards for it.
But it needs to handle that heavy equipment.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, yeah, 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 it, it does already. I'm just looking for the width part of it, and, and the other bits and pieces. All that stuff, again, trucks will come up and down. I have a store that, that I'm supposed to build, I can't, eighteen foot, eighteen mile.
Ain't nothing simple anymore.
They work out, they fill the work it throughs, you're gonna need.
Are you here to, to ask, ask our permission to widen the road? Is that basically what you're here for?
So again, I wanted just to put gravel on top of the road I have, but it had to be built to standards of the town, is what I was told.
Yeah.
We had done my homework, we were saying. We've been working the last six, eight months about how to figure that out.
I guess what Mr. Seymour is saying, though, is that, right now, you have a completely private road, unrecorded with the town. If you wish to, to further expand down there, you should bring it up to some standard, and we've discussed what that standard is. Should you come in in the future, or you wanna subdivide, you know, subdivision, you may find us saying, we need to review the standards for the road for what it contains.
Exactly.
But from our point of view, why can't we just look at it as a driveway? You register it in the registry of deeds any way you want.
Well, I think the question, because I look at it as a driveway, it's serving one or two lots. Once you start serving multiple lots down there, now it's gonna be to a better standard than a driveway.
And does my butters account for those two houses, three houses, right? So, I don't have any house, one as one lot.
Like I said, I think, I think what you propose, Sean, makes all the sense in the world, the sixteen, the forty, the depth and everything you have. I am totally on board with that, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. I think that's a better standard for what you wanna do in the future. I think the right of way width is something you'll have to deal with, and again, if you come to subdivision, everything's off, you can start over again.
Right.
And I think the distinction you, you made is that, there's a difference between a private road, not recognized by the town, and one recognized. And that may come in, become relevant when we want to, when he wants to do some building.
So let's, let's say this, so he's got two butters on the way in, each one of them splits their lot, and puts a house up there, and, man, we got four houses in there already, and on this non-standard subdivision.
Right, but they could do that now, couldn't they?
So, can I just say something? If it's built to the backlot driveway standard, they can only have two dwellings on it before they have to upgrade the road.
Right.
Say that again.
The backlot driveway, in the ordinance, you can only have two dwellings on that, on that driveway.
But that's a different beast than the, than a private road.
Isn't, isn't he just resurfacing the road, basically? Isn't that, isn't that, do you, do you need a permit to resurface the road?
Oh, he's.
Somehow there's a significance in being recognized by a town.
Right.
He's rebuilding it.
Resurfacing?
No, he's rebuilding, he's rebuilding.
He's not building a new road, he's resurfacing.
I think that that road, if you wanna call it a road, that was built for a driveway purpose, or a camp road purpose, not to serve multiple uses and lots. And that's where I have heartburn with the lack of town standards, because if we're gonna be putting more lots, more people over this, it's gotta be built to a standard that can withstand traffic impacts and emergency vehicles.
Especially if it's also so flops, and so folks.
But that's, but you're, you're anticipating future growth.
He's showing you he's gonna do future growth, 'cause he's putting in another driveway to split lots off for a spin.
Let's get to the backlot, really.
Right, but still, they gotta go over that road, to get to that road.
And what Christina, you said, is that off this red marked road, he can only have at most two lots.
Right.
So that creates some limits on how much.
On that piece, it does, but on the green, I mean, I don't think there's.
But right now, that, that green one, I believe, is still, I mean, if they could build it to what I asked for out of the backlot, then it can only support those two dwellings, right?
But is it classified as a backlot road, or is it classified as a private road?
So don't we need, don't we need an overall plan here? We're, we're getting little bits and pieces here, we're not, don't we need an overall plan for this, this whole area? If you're gonna, if you're gonna, you're talking about building a new road, when, when I'm looking at it, like you're resurfacing an existing road.
What I would like to call it is a reclassification of this road.
Or a classification.
Or a classification of this road, exactly, because, I mean, you can call every, anybody who has a power path in a right of way right now is a private road. By our standards, by our standards.
Gentlemen, could I ask, ask you guys something? Could you please be more aware of the fact that you talk over people? Christina was speaking, and you just started talking, and then you joined in, Jim, and totally ignored what she was saying. I don't think that's right. Am I correct?
I, I can't remember what I was saying.
You were talking about the backlot driveway.
And I said, that's what I'm concerned about, because I walk around lots, too.[1686.81] And all I say, that's what I'm concerned about, because I have a lot of lot streets.
Yeah, you got to talk about, you know, giving development to. Well, I mean, I just. So I just, I'm thinking, if it's only built to a backlot standard at this point, and therefore thinking about, you know, it doesn't need to be a private driveway, then how much development can I actually approve on that road?
Finish the question, just reuse that thought.
Uh, yeah, exactly. So same thing. I, I don't know what law too is doing either. Right, and I know that on the backside of, of my lot next to the, the Wolf Rescue, they broke apart off and, and sold it to their wolf folks. So I, I don't know what anyone else is doing.
I mean, I just need to know, because in the ordinance it says, I, I just have to know what I'm doing here.
But you are.
Because these applications aren't going to come to all of you, you're not going to know about it. So I need to know how many, if you're going to allow this, how many dwellings are you allowing on this road?
Yeah.
Before it needs to come back and be upgraded.
That's why I say we need an overall plan.
Yeah.
I mean, you need more substantial.
What we have in ordinance is what we have right now. So if you can, I mean, can't we just approve it with, with, you know, exceptions or waivers?
That's what I was saying.
I mean, we're still following the ordinance, we're just allowing a little bit of flexibility.
Such as, anything prevents the.
Number, number dwellings.
Well, I mean, the, the standards and the ordinance for private road, like the width, we're asking for it just to be.
The private road standards under subdivision, that's the problem. We don't have a standalone road standard.
I know, what are we going to do?
That's why I'm trying to help you. I'm trying, I'm with you, Christina, I don't know how to, don't know how to.
Take the standards that make sense right in front of us.
The attorney told me that those apply. Those apply for all of the roads.
Good, that's a good thing for us.
Oh, what apply?
The.
Those road standards.
Subdivision standards.
Subdivision standard.
They apply for all the roads.
And if the intent is to put a subdivision down in there eventually, then why wouldn't you, you know, plan on doing that right from the start? I mean, with a sixty foot right of way. I mean, why would you want to put a forty foot right of way in an area that you've got to put a subdivision in anyway?
Well, that, right now, he's got restrictions of, physical restrictions that, because he's going off other people's properties, so.
Other people's property, there's hundred and fifty year old stone walls.
Yeah.
And a bunch of things that.
But you, but you're not going to actually build this, this road to that standard. You're just looking for a right of way. I don't care if there's rocks there or whatever it is. It's like, here's the right of way, right? Here, it goes right through the stone wall or whatever. Um, it's for future development.
It would, it would, uh, impinge upon those things right now to extend it to sixty feet. Yeah, it would.
I, I, I just see it being a problem later on, if you're going to, if you, if you're going to bring this up to, to the town's road standards, because subdivisions going there later on, I mean, you know, you're, you're asking for a, for a narrower right of way than what's going to be required later on.
I have, in terms of utilities and natural features and just the way the road is, that's what I'm reducing. Plus I have to go back and have it re-surveyed all the way down to, um, to have a sixty feet versus slightly fifty feet.
To your point, Dave, then it's kind of growth control. If he doesn't come in for subdivision, it's kind of growth control. You only do one every five years.
Two of them will be gone.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I have a question. So you said the town's attorneys advised you that this road should be.
Not on this application, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It was on unrelated, um, issue that I was dealing with.
But they were saying the road standard we should apply is for one of the subdivision.
Is that the only half though?
That's the one that you talked about, sixty.
Right, but I'm just saying that's the only half, so yeah, I'm not sure.
Right, that's why I'm thinking.
That's why.
And waivers should be asked for upfront if, if we need to. That's what I have for you.
And then we could take each application individually.
Right.
And give a waiver if we felt.
Exactly, that's why we advised him to do the waivers for this.
Ooh, I think, yeah.
That's fair. Then we can, then we can.
Contrary to the purpose of the ordinance.
Thank you, Ben.
It's contrary to.
Then maybe the ordinances need to be rewritten, David.
Well, I think.
Just because they're written isn't mean they're perfect.
So I think chapter, the section seven, eleven, and twelve gives you the authority to make those changes. And like this.
At the present time, we wanted to write a survey showing the, the road.
The road and the wet.
Stormwater.
Stormwater.
Okay, stormwater, which is called street, whatever you need.
This, this runoff and stormwater is. Do you.
What's that?
Runoff and stormwater.
Yeah, the same thing.
Of stormwater management.
I call it runoff.
It's all stormwater management.
Yeah.
Road control, storm.
That's part of the state's prediction.
The gravel road.
It's overkill, the same private roads have to be brought up to public standards.
I, I agree, but then what's the fallback is all my own questions.
Fallback is right in front of you.
But you're, but you're creating a standard that doesn't exist right now. You're accepting a state standard, which maybe the town all the partners may want something different.
We, we have, we have road standards in our ordinance, that's the thing. I, I understand the wisdom eventually of accepting these standards, because we, we write the book, I guess. And now we're not.
Right now, they really have nothing for gravel roads.
You know, the, the criteria and standards that you, you have to, you have, you shall comply with the provisions of the standards in section four and section five, land use standards. So you shall comply with it, so it's.
When you're doing a subdivision, but he's not.
He's not doing a subdivision.
Okay.
Round and round.
And even if he were to do a subdivision on private road that didn't intend to become a public road eventually, he might not have to come up to that standard. And we've done that in this town before. Allowed a subdivision that, and that the condition will always remain a private road, but less than those standards. So that, that has been done.
And at this point, as I mentioned, myself, my brothers, plan to keep this private. Uh-oh, now until when?
Yeah. Do you, do you plan on gating it or?
I'm sorry?
Do you plan on.
There's a gate right there in front, they went through it.
Yeah.
So I guess the question is.
As you pass the common sense part.
The common sense standard is adequate access for public safety.
Yeah.
So I think, in summary, what he's proposed is acceptable. We need to see a plan and then we need to see how the stormwater management works with that plan. Okay, that fair?
Yeah.
You feel in any of the public hearings, have we stopped the lines?
I would think it would be.
I think many of the applications.
Also on that same survey?
I'm sorry?
I would, I would think of, for me, I would do a sixty foot right of way on that same survey.
But.
This is covering my bases.
Yep.
A few women, a few Sean.
Now would be.
I'm not the guy there.
Now would be the time, if you could get it from your, your, uh, butters to do such a thing.
Right.
But there's no need for it, I believe.
According to the streets, you don't have to remove the wall. You could just put the street alongside the wall, so you don't have to remove those features. But in the future, twenty, twenty-five years, those lot owners are going to be gone.
Right.
Children or whoever they sell to may own the property at that point. They may.
The right of way's been designated and there you go.
That seems to be what, the crux of what we're getting to is that how much will this road eventually be required to, to have, you know, traveling on it? If we knew the answer to that, it would be easiest to come to remove the wall.
All right, so, so, to your point, unless we got to have the gentleman do, or woman do sixty foot wide, just because it makes sense, because it's now.
Only in my mind, if we're spending that money.
Got you, yeah, that, um, the road width and those bits are to what I suggest or to what is there now?
I would say what you suggested makes the most sense, but to clarify with the fire department and public works to make sure there's a satisfactory first word.
Sure, but a survey that to your, what you suggested would be fine. And if alternatively, you have a dotted line that went whatever, ten feet in either direction on the other side, possible sixty foot would make, by makes.
Right.
And letters from the fire chief and, dated from the fire chief and public works director.
Is that.
And we, okay, fine, yeah.
Emails.
Need to understand is we need to work this out at the planning board level, so that in the future, there isn't issues come up when people try to get, uh, you know, building permits, that somehow that, what the town has accepted in the past needs to change. We need to make sure that doesn't happen, I think.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to create substandard situations that bite everybody in the, the town and the people that live on it.
So supposedly you can't set precedence, because, because we, we're supposed to follow the.
Well, I think to fall back on what was recommended from the attorney or what team has kind of supported, if you do it, waiver, then each one's unique.
Yeah.
But I think if the attorney told you this requires sixty feet for private roads, I think that was not the best of legal advice. It's not the advice I would give. I've been doing since eighty-six, so.
I'm going to ask one, I guess my phone, okay. Uh, so I have that, does it create an issue with those, that two lot minimum, uh, or getting a building permit on my own space versus?
That would be only applied to the red line. If you decide, if you don't want to bring that red line up to the same standard, you can fall back to the back lot to do two lots.
Okay.
If you want to bring it up to the same private road standards, then you can. But if you only want to do the back lot standard for that red line, it only have two lots that frontage off that for building permit purposes, you can do it that way. You, it's your call.
Now, to your point of that is, the standard has to be wider than the fourteen feet right now? Yeah, I'd put that.
Backlot's eighteen right of way and fifteen access.
So it has to make it eighteen feet wide?
That's the right of way.
Right of way.
And then the access is usually is fifteen.
But you're limited to two lots.
Yeah, I'm just trying, that might be a way we could assert some control by saying, when we approve it, we approve this width and therefore it's only applicable to two lots. So that does act as somewhat of a, it was, come in later and ask to increase it.
Again, I think that's future.
O R C or.
Whatever.
Some project.
I just think when I bring the gravel in, I bring the other little bits or, or the survey that comes up, I just want to make sure I tell those people correctly what I need.
Yeah, it's your call.
Okay. Anything else?
Any other questions?
I just said, help you, your hand, help me, just working it out.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for your time. You been busy with any other business? Gosh, it's still not even eight o'clock.
Would you plan to have, um, a workshop, a regular five thirty workshop and get a copy of this new state law they're talking about and see what it is? What is I saying?
Christina, can you get a copy of that state law in the next couple of weeks, do you think?
Make a motion, we hold a workshop at five thirty?
Second.
That'd be great.
Yes, we address the issue of what this new state law is going to do.
Yeah.
So we have a motion to.
Motion to hold workshop at five thirty in second if I call.
Okay.
Purpose of what? To discuss what the new state law, about what we discussed at the very beginning.
Subdivision of the law. With, oh, you need to get a copy of the statute, so to have them to tell, exactly what it's, tell them what you need, what was going on.
Christina, did you say you would have copies of that for us?
I go to training next week and I'll try to grab a bunch of extra copies. Ones that are updated.
So I'd like to discuss that after your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ryan, you guys can make a motion.
So we're going to have a workshop? Yep, then you've got to make a motion for that.
Second.
Okay, just give it. All in favor of? Okay. And do we have a, a motion to adjourn?
I want to stay longer.
You want to stay longer?
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
All second.
All in favor? All right, time is seven fifty-two.
Look, Star Trek. I won't be here, but you can have a substitution.
And we want to know.
I'm going to Scudic Lake.
For what?
Scudic Lake.
In other words, you're going to vacation.
Yeah.
Enjoy.
Milo Brownville.
Relax.